Good afternoon, welcome. We're following the speed of order and I'd like you to stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. We have two new board members on our school board this evening. I'm going to welcome both Jamie Johnson and Bruce Hanson as our first board meeting for the Hudson School Board. I know that they'll look at the book being tremendous assets for us and they'll look forward to their service. The election of officers is our third agenda item.
I'd like to just review the process for the election of officers for the next, for this coming next 12 months. We'll use this guideline. The office positions will be President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Clerk. There'll be three calls for nominations for each one. More than one member can be nominated at any given call. A second is not necessary for nominations. And to accept a nomination, a member does not need to respond. But to decline the nomination, a member needs to speak up prior to the vote beginning. If only one member is nominated, the President or the Chair declares the member elected. There's not a vote. If more than one member is nominated, voting is by secret ballot and not by show of hands or voice vote or roll call. The President or Chair appoints tellers to hand out, collect, and count the votes cast. The majority of the ballots cast will determine... Oops, looking at Caitlin here. Looking at Caitlin again. Can't get Caitlin off my mind. I got it. A majority of the ballots cast will determine who is elected. And more than half of the votes cast is necessary for appointment. By example, four votes for Person A, one vote for Person B, two votes for Person C. The member with four votes is elected. If no nominated members receives the majority of the votes cast, then the members continue voting until someone receives a majority of the ballots cast and is elected. The election does not proceed to the next office until someone's elected for the unelected office. The tellers will identify only the member elected and not who received how many votes. Okay, that's understood? So we'll begin with the first position, the position of President. I'll entertain a nomination for the position of President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to, I wish to nominate Mr. Tom Holland for President.
Okay, we have a nomination for Tom Holland. Is there another nomination?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Brian Bell and Jamie Johnson. Do it at the same time?
I'm not sure on that.
I think that's what it said here.
Okay, so there's two other nominations, Brian Bell and Jamie Johnson. So we have three nominations. I'll ask for a third time, is there another nomination for the opposite President? Okay, so we have a secret ballot and I'll appoint, I think, Tim and Diane. If they could provide the ballots, pass out the ballots.
Mr. President?
Yes. Goes up.
I decline the nomination.
Okay, we have one decline. So the two nominees to this point are Brian Bell and Tom Holland. So you, once you have your ballot, I'll ask you just to write the name in and mark the ballot number as number one. And then if we could turn that into our attendance. Yeah. Okay, we'll give Tim a moment. It's a good thing he's a finance guy, he can count these numbers quickly.
I have two of us.
Oh, there's two, that's good.
Mr. Holland had the majority in that election.
Okay, so Tom Holland is voted as the President for the next 12 months. The next position is Vice President and I'll entertain a nomination for the Vice President position.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Lynn Robson for Vice President.
Lynn Robson's been nominated. Is there a second nomination for Vice President?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Brian Bell and Jamie Johnson for Vice President.
Okay, there's been two other nominations for Jamie Johnson and Brian Bell. Is there a third nomination? Okay, hearing none, we'll cast our ballots again. We have those distributed. I would label this one as well, please. This will be the first one on this ballot, on this one.
Mr. President, Lynn Robson had the majority.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Robson is our Vice President for the next 12 months, thank you. The next position is Treasurer. I'll entertain a motion, our nomination for Treasurer.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dan Turnahoy.
Nomination for Dan Turnahoy for Treasurer. Is there a second nomination? Is there, I'll ask again for the third time, is there another nomination for Treasurer for the position? That's the third ask. Okay, hearing none, we have now, we have Dan as our Treasurer for the next 12 months, thank you. The final position for the, on the school board is Clerk, Clerk position. I'll entertain a nomination for the Office of Clerk.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Brian Bell as Clerk.
Okay, there's a nomination for Brian Bell. Is there a second nomination? I'll ask a third time, is there another nomination for Clerk? Hearing none, Brian Bell, thank you, serving as our Clerk. Thank you all, and thanks for those of you who are serving as officers. Moving on then to recognition. We have several recognitions tonight. Sandy Kovac as well as Cory and Tim will be conducting these recognitions. Let's start you with Sandy.
All right, I'll ask Caitlin to come up by the microphone as I introduce. On April 26th, we were notified that 10 Presidential Scholar semifinalists were named for the state of Wisconsin. And one of those 10 was Hudson High School senior Caitlin Byer. Then, on May 6th, the 141 finalists of the 49th class of U.S. Presidential Scholars was announced. And the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars selects honored scholars annually based on their academic success, artistic excellence, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. The 2013 U.S. Presidential Scholars are comprised of one young man and one young woman from each state, the District of Columbia in Puerto Rico, and from U.S. families living abroad, as well as 15 chosen at-large, and 20 U.S. Presidential Scholars in the arts, of which Wisconsin does have one of those. The 2013 ceremony will be held June 18th, or 16th, when each honoree will receive a Presidential Scholar medallion. So Caitlin, I'm going to have you come up to the mic. And first of all, we need to say congratulations. So tell us about some of the things you're involved in at the high school and then your plans for next year, please.
Okay, my name is Caitlin Byer and I'm a senior at Hudson High School. And in high school, I have participated in student mentors. I have played soccer for three years and basketball through high school. And I am the President of National Honor Society. I am also involved with the Youth Advisory Council for Children's Hospitals in Minnesota. And that's comprised of about 15 young adults who have experience working with the hospital, whether or not they're a patient or siblings of patient. And we work to make the hospital a more comfortable environment for patients and for families. I also, well, in 2008, I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease. And after many hospital stays and three surgeries, I knew that I really wanted to give back somehow, but I did not know how I would do that. And then, in April of 2010, I was given a soccer tie blanket at Cleveland Clinic during a difficult radiology procedure. And that blanket, as insignificant as it seemed to other people, it really brightened my day and it, it was amazing that other people, that I didn't even know were thinking of me. And so, right away, I knew how I was going to give back. So I started Blankets for a Brighter Day. And Blankets for a Brighter Day provides tie blankets to patients of Minneapolis Children's Hospital. And as of today, we have donated 873 blankets, so.
And your plans for next year?
I am going to the University of St. Thomas. And after that, I hope to go on to med school.
Caitlin, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Next, I'll bring, ask all of our Destination Imagination coaches and students to come forward. I know we have quite a few out there. 10 teams from the Hudson School District representing both elementary and secondary competed in the state competition on April 13th in Stevens Point. Four Hudson teams, and that's an unprecedented amount. Four Hudson teams advanced and will compete in the International DI Global's in Knoxville, Tennessee, and I think they'll tell you, I think it's this next week. So I know we have some coaches and students that will tell us a little bit more about their competition.
Okay, we have very, very few here actually because three of the other teams are off doing fundraising. It is kind of an expensive adventure, where they're trying to raise $20,000. So we have various things going on. They're at a Bay Part BBQ right now, working on that. So I am one of the managers, Kathy Kepulis. I work with a middle school team. These are, let's see, three, no, four, seventh of them, there are seven of them. They're in eighth grade. And there are two, like Sandy said, there are three other teams. There's a high school team and an elementary school team and another middle school team that are going. And Destination Imagination is just one of those growing programs in our district. And it's project-based learning. It really teaches academics, it teaches leadership skills, all those 21st century skills that really are what I know that Hudson really is trying to promote and work into all their curriculum and things like that. So, let's see, without further ado, I think I'd like to have my team introduce themselves. And I do have a co-manager, Tom Wareham, who's not here, he's out fundraising as well. So, thank you very much, and they will introduce themselves. And you guys can just tell us something about DI that you keep coming back. We have so many teams that come back, kids that come back year after year. So why do you keep coming back? Your name and why you keep coming back, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Mulanife and I keep coming back to DI because it helps me build more creative problem-solving skills. And all these people here, I probably would not be as good of friends with if I hadn't done DI. And it also provides opportunities to meet people from around the world. If you go to Global's and around the state, even around our region of Wisconsin. It's a very cool opportunity and I really enjoy it.
Hi, my name is Grace Kazak and every time I come back to DI is because I just love being able to problem solve and build all these amazing sets every year with all these people that I've grown so close to.
Hi, my name is Andrew Richardson and the reason why I keep coming back is, well, because it's phonics activity that you can do. Yeah.
My name is Ethan Kepulis and I keep coming back to DI because I really enjoy the technical part of it and I enjoy meeting new people.
Thank you. Could I ask Kathy, what's the event, the fundraising event? Is there some, can you give a plug for that?
We have a number of things going on. Right now, we have a Bay Part BBQ fundraiser. It is going on as we speak, it's going on till 8 o'clock tonight. $12 for delicious, delicious barbecue, smoked barbecue. We also have a website and I don't know if that's something that I can tell you now. It's a, it's called CrowdTilt and it's a website that we're taking fundraising donations from. So you can go to the website, if you become a member, you can actually get really cool gifts. Like postcards from Tennessee and buttons, team design buttons and things like that. So there are different levels. Is that something I can tell you now, the website, or can?
It's an infomercial.
An infomercial.
And then while she's looking, then I think on Friday, you have a movie showing.
Oh, yes, oh, this is amazing. Friday, we have this documentary. It's a documentary of orphaned girls that get into the education system. I think it's, they get involved in the education system and how education has changed their lives. It's a documentary, it's at 7 o'clock at Willa River Elementary School in the auditorium. Suggested, donated, or suggested free will donation of $5. But I am really touting this as something that is very inspirational for educators. So whether you want to be an inspired educator or whether you want to support DI, you know, I think it's going to be a really, really moving movie. So that is something that you could do. Other than that, we do have raffle tickets for sale, $5 apiece, you could win money. I think that is it. Here is the website.
The website.
Website. It's tinyurl.com/hudson with a capital H, capital D, capital I. So everything else is lowercase, but the H in Hudson and the capital D, capital I.
Can you do that one more time?
Okay, tinyurl.com/hudson with a capital H, the rest lowercase, capital D, capital I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
DI is always a source of pride for us, so thank you.
Good luck. And we'll make sure to let you know how they do in Global's in a week as well and invite perhaps some of them back again. Next, we have three students as well as their advisor. I know I saw Mr. Miller here as well. Oh, there he is. You can come on up to the mic as well. High school students from across the state attended the DECA State Career Development Conference at the Grand Geneva Resort in Lake Geneva on March 19th through 21st. DECA, just as a reminder, is a student organization in high schools and colleges around the globe that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Three Hudson students, and I'll let them introduce themselves. Three Hudson students qualified for DECA International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California on April 24th through 27th. And they're going to share some of that experience with you and some of the results this evening.
Hi, my name is Dustin Miller and I'm the advisor for these wonderful three young men. But Skylar, Riley, and Dane, as always, they always represent Hudson very, very well at the international conference. I haven't gotten back the results yet. But the one thing that I always remember from these three is the way that they interact with other schools and the leadership roles that they take. As far as at state, they did very well and they advanced to internationals. At internationals, Riley did make it as a finalist and he was in the top 20. There were 16,000, between 16,000 and 16,500 students there. And they were the top 10% of everyone else. As you go through districts, the state, it dwindles down and these young men are the best of the best. So before I turn it over to them, I want to thank you for recognizing them and also thank you for your support in helping us to attend Anaheim. It was an excellent, excellent experience. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Love as well, so go ahead.
My name is Dane Rudy and I participated in the retail merchandising series. That was my event.
I'm Skylar Puleos. I'm a junior at Hudson High School and I competed in restaurant and food service management.
I'm Riley Collins. I also competed in the retail merchandising series event. And I made it to the finals, which was super awesome. But then, ended up not placing, so I didn't get first, second, or third. But I did make the finals and I did, I brought my medal because only 20 people in the world have this medal. So I take a lot of pride in that and I just kind of want to show you guys. So I always pass it around and you guys got to accept it.
So now I'd just like to kind of explain what we did and what is a DECA competition. So it is a way to test basically your entrepreneurship, marketing, and commerce skills. And specifically for our events, we did, we did series events. So they're basically on the spot. And we do one 100-question multiple-choice test. And that is all about economics, marketing, business, any sort of management tasks and things like that. And then we also had two role plays, which basically put you into a business setting. And so as an example, maybe you're talking to your CEO and you are the Vice President of Marketing and he's asking you to implement a new clothing line. And you then have 10 minutes to prepare how you would do that and then 10 minutes to present that, your solution to him.
Otherwise, we were also given a multiple-choice test, which is basically if you took marketing or economics in college, take the final exam that you took in that class, weave them together, and then that's what they give us in DECA. And that's actually how I made the finals. I got a high enough score on the multiple-choice test and I got high enough scores on my role play to make it onto the finals. But I only received a medal for my multiple-choice test and then another medal for making it to the finals. But that's a huge deal for me because back when I first started DECA, I got, my very first multiple-choice score, I believe, was 58%. My state multiple-choice score was 88% this year. Last year was like 65, it was bad. At internationals, there's a solid chance, we haven't found out yet, that I got over a 90% on the test. And I haven't taken economics or marketing in a long time. So that's just the amount of studying effort that goes into something like this. And that's why I take so much pride in that medal. Outside of competition, we spent a lot of time socializing with kids from other states, other towns in Wisconsin. I got to participate in the voting for the national officers for this year. Unfortunately, I didn't get to run. But basically what happened was, we sat in a room like this, almost exactly like you guys. It was pretty much like this, except I got to be you guys. And we would have candidates come in. We got to interview seven presidential candidates, which is the most of all time. And then two different candidates from our region. And what we got to do was ask them like three serious questions and then make fun of them for a half an hour and see who took it the best and see who was the most personable. And we actually ended up voting for a boy from Michigan and a girl from Texas. Unfortunately, neither of them were chosen by the other states, but we liked them the best in the state of Wisconsin. And that's what matters, right? So otherwise, we also spent time on the beach, you know, went shopping. We use California, we lived it up a little bit. But it was really an amazing experience overall. And I personally like to thank you guys for everything you've done for DECA over my four years of high school. I know last year, we really kicked it in a high gear and you guys were a huge part of that. As well as Ms. Love, she's been huge in helping us really get our chapter started. And now, when you walk into a state conference, everyone knows who Hudson is. And that's a huge deal for us because the first time we walked in, no one knew where we were on the map. But this year, they know where we are, which is, was our goal at the beginning of the year. So thank you ever much.
Thank you, thanks very much, it's very impressive. Hiring you guys would be a no-brainer, so. And there's going to be a lot of time, there's going to be plenty of opportunity for you guys to be up in these seats in some community where you're living as well. So can I just ask where you're going to school? Plan to go to school, are you all seniors? You're not all seniors.
I'm a senior as well, Riley and I are seniors. Skylar's a junior this year, so he's got next year as well to go back. I will be attending the Engineering Honors College at Purdue. I plan to study mechanical engineering, so I'm excited for that next year.
Fantastic, Riley.
And, well, much less illustrious than Purdue. I will be attending the University of Minnesota Duluth for business. So I will be majoring in marketing, minoring in either finance or accounting.
Wonderful, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to have Carol Nauya, step forward please. Carol is an eighth grader at Hudson Middle School and she has received the 2013 Promising Young Writers Award from the National Council of Teachers of English. Carol is the only student from Wisconsin this year to receive the award. Compositions were evaluated by national judges on content, purpose, audience, tone, word choice, organization, development, and style. Judges also looked for writing that demonstrated effective and imaginative use of language to inform and move an audience. And Carol, we want to have her talk about this a little bit. She's also a member of the Hudson Middle School Writers Group she helped found. So Carol, first, tell us about the composition. What did you write and submit to the organization? And you might want, you can bring that down a little bit if you want. Yep, step forward.
Stand real close.
We had two pieces that we had to write. One was a theme piece, they gave us a theme that we had to write about. It was Unexpected Connections. It could be four pages long, double-spaced, the smallest type could be 12. It was really hard to fit the whole story in there. But it's about two friends who thought they were really close. Well, one of them did. Found out that the other person had been using her and went away really sad. Someone noticed, came to her and asked what was wrong and this bond formed between them. That was one of my pieces. The second piece was the best piece. It followed the same rules as the theme piece, except it could be six pages long. It was one of the ending scenes from a book that I'm reading currently. So I can't give too many details on it because my friends are reading it and I wouldn't want to ruin it because it has a major effect on the... because it has a major effect on the plot.
And then tell us about this writers group that you've started.
It was originally a group of about four to six people that started meeting in one of the teachers' rooms during lunch, the eighth-hour lunch period. And we just shared our stories and word got out and more people joined. At its height, we had fifteen people coming regularly. It slowly declines. We now have a couple people that meet regularly, share our stories. It's not that big of a thing right now because the stress started building up with homework and everything. We didn't have as much time to write, so.
All right, but I want you to remember this name because I think we'll be reading her books in the future. So congratulations.
Congratulations. We have a special award that Cory is going to present.
Thank you, President. Mr. President, Sharon, would you please come up to the mic? Everyone, I'd like to announce Sharon Coltenberg as the 2013 Washington Association of School Nursing Catherine Etter School Nurse of the Year. This award is for recognizing excellence in developing school and administrating school nursing and health services programs. And as I reviewed the criteria for this, when we were putting together the application for this, the first thing I thought was this was long overdue. But when we looked at the criteria selection, this is Sharon to a T. Quality of practice systematically enhances the quality and effectiveness of school nursing practices and the delivery of services. Collaborates with the client, the family, the school staff, community organizations to promote school health and provides leadership in school nursing and school health programs. That is what Sharon has done in Hudson for the last eighteen years. Sharon is wrapping up a thirty-five-year career in, in school nursing this year and we recognized her at the retirement banquet last night. So this was great timing for Sharon to receive this award. When I was asked to put some words together about Sharon, I was very challenged in how to communicate the very long list of reasons Sharon deserved this award. And just briefly, I will share tonight that I think the most important piece is Sharon's motivation for always going the extra mile really does seem to be from her commitment to students and their learning and for her own commitment to being the best she can be. And, and those, I said this last night, for those who know Sharon would agree, we all admire her persistence, thoroughness, assertiveness, and professionalism. So we're very proud to have these School Nurse of the Year come from Hudson. And there couldn't be a more fitting award winner than Sharon Coltenberg. So congratulations, Sharon.
So I've asked Sharon just to take a moment to address the board and I think she'd like to do that.
I just want to say that I've been very fortunate to have worked with some very, very talented educators, staff, administrators. I've been had, I've had opportunities to work with numerous students that have complicated medical issues. We have the largest middle school in the state of Wisconsin and we have eleven diabetics there. And I am so proud of the way that we have developed the program. And actually, Peggy Eller has also been instrumental in making sure that our diabetics have diets that, you know, they can figure out. And the level of medical complicated students coming into the district has increased throughout the years. And we meet their needs. And some of the things that just sit in my mind, and one in particular had a kindergarten roundup. We had a new diabetic that was coming in, very, very unsure about, you know, whether they would feel comfortable. After I talked to them about what their program looked like, what we do in our health offices, how we support students, she just started crying. And she said, "I'm so relieved that you guys can handle my student or my child." Another thing that happened with one of the other diabetics, let's just say, he came, he looked at me and he goes, "Mrs. Coltenberg, do you like being a school nurse?" And I said, "You know what, John, I shouldn't say his name." You know, it's students like you every day that just make me feel like my job is worthwhile. And there have been students throughout the district and this is just a tremendous district and it serves students well. I also want to thank Cory and Lisa for nominating me. Lisa's in a good position now to, you know, lead things forward. And I want to thank my husband, who's been my, my side and my family throughout all, all these years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. And we have another award winner Tim is going to introduce.
I'll have Peggy Eller come up. Peggy is the District Child Nutrition Coordinator and has been with us six years now, I believe, completing your sixth year. Peggy was awarded the School Nutrition Association of Wisconsin Outstanding Director of the Year for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. It was, the nomination for the award was submitted by our child nutrition staff and from input with members, from members of and peers around the state. Some of the criteria that are used in determining who is awarded this, this distinguished award are things like program enhancement. And Peggy's very involved with our program operations. She's very hands-on. And she manages a very fiscally sound program while at the same time promoting healthy nutrition and healthy diets for all of our students. And she encourages her staff to strive for professional development as well. She provides classes for staff and surrounding school programs. She's a certified trainer for the School Nutrition Association and the National Food Service Management Institute. Peggy is involved with school wellness, as Sharon had talked about. And she supports school efforts to promote nutrition to students, also on our recycling committee. Some of the association involvement and promotion, and there's, there's a pretty long list here. Peggy is very active, has been active at the national as well as the state level. She's served as Midwest Regional Director, National Conference Chair, Certification and Credentialing Governing Council Education Committee. And that's all at the national level. And at the state level, she is the state past president, Chair of the Conference Planning Committee, USDA Foods Task Force, as well as a local chapter president and nutrition chair. She is also a registered dietitian and she's an active member of the School Nutrition Dietetic Practice Group. Peggy's also involved in the community. She serves on the St. Croix County Healthier Together Task Force and she works with area agencies in nutrition-related issues. She also is active working on the Backpack Program and the Empty Bowls Event. And she's taught sanitation to various groups and organizations. She volunteers at the local foods, food shelf. Some comments about Peggy from some of the folks that have worked with her is she has passion in her field. She has a lot of respect for her staff and she has a wealth of knowledge that radiates. And I would, I would second all of those things. I would also say that Peggy looks at the big picture really of what is best for our students. And she always has that focus in mind when she's operating in the food service. So again, the district is so very fortunate. I think folks that work with Peggy would feel actually very fortunate to our students and our parents and the community at large. And so I just want to congratulate Peggy on that nice award.
Thank you. It's nice being last because I can be short and sweet. But I'd like to thank you for recognizing me and giving me this opportunity to recognize our department and the wonderful staff. They're really the reason I'm standing here today. If I could take that award and tear it up into fifty pieces, they need to get one because they're the ones that do it. I just get to stand up here and accept it. So I'd like to especially like to thank them for nominating me and for the hard work that they do. They do just about anything I put forward and they make it fun to come to work every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. I see this is a little bittersweet for us as a district because we're losing two top people that have just been awarded awards that are top in, in the state of Wisconsin. And now we're losing them to retirement, unfortunately. But thank you for your service and congratulations to both of you. All right, moving on then to our next item on our agenda, which is number five, Superintendent's Report.
Mr. President and Board members, I want to have Peg Schumaker come to the microphone. Certainly, we are very fortunate in the Hudson School District that we have another talented, inspiring leader right in our midst who is well-invested in the Hudson community and needs no introduction. Peg has served over twenty years in the Hudson School District as a teacher, as a principal, and as, at the district level, as Associate Director of Learning Services. And we are so very fortunate that she has accepted the position of high school principal starting next year. And she's already started that transition, serving two schools at the present time, Willow River and starting to work at the high school for the transition. Peg?
Hi, thank you so much. I am so honored and humbled to serve our community and our high school as principal. It is, the, the vision for high school learning of the future is a bold one and it's compelling and I believe deeply in it. And I just really look forward to continuing the work that was initially envisioned by High School HSD 2025 quite a while ago and was begun by Ms. Laura Love and her team. So I feel incredibly grateful to work with a talented group of students evident tonight, a really amazing, talented group of staff, administration, and to really serve this community that I've lived in for over twenty years. So it's a, a real true honor. Each day between now and the end of the school year, I'm either at Willow or I'm at the high school. And Mrs. Pat Hodges is serving a couple of days a week at Willow when I'm with Ms. Love and, and team at the high school. It's been great to be a part of, of that. Laura's been incredibly gracious and I'm grateful for any time that I get to work with her. And she's a personal friend and visionary and I just feel extremely fortunate to have the little bit of time that we have in this transition. So I thank you, Board, for your commitment to serve our high school students in a different way that will meet their needs, engage them in their learning, and really set them up for an exciting future. So thank you again. I'm, I'm very, very honored. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peg. It's a very sad situation having to lose Laura Love, who has done, and her team has done such remarkable work towards this new initiative. And we are very fortunate to have Peg Schumaker kind of on, on, you know, in the house, so to speak, to be able to fill in and take over and continue the good work that's been started. So thank you.
So Board members, we're on the hunt for two more principals, two elementary principals. One to serve Willow River as Peg moves on into the high school and the other one to follow in Travis Berenger's footsteps at Rivercrest. So we have that process underway. The positions have been posted since April sixteenth, or at least elementary principal positions have been posted. And the deadline passed yesterday. So I can tell you that we have over forty applicants for the position. And we're in the midst of looking at those credentials now. A team of administrators are reviewing them and selecting who will move on to the telephone screening. That's the next part of the process. I have met with the Willow River staff and the Rivercrest staff. And we've also had a survey that's underway for both staffs and we've asked a couple different questions. Part of it is to use in the selection process, but it's really important that we use the information we gain for the new principals as they come in. It's very insightful and helpful to them. And the questions are really in three areas. One, what are the important characteristics that you value in a new principal? And then also, what do you want to continue at the school and what needs to change or what would you suggest to change? So the good, important information as we move forward. I have also started the meetings with parent representatives. So I've met with the Rivercrest parents and tomorrow I'll be meeting with the Willow parents. And again, we talk about the traits that are important for them in the selection of the next principal and, and we'll use those in interview process. The parent groups will also select a couple representatives to be on the first interview team. So they're in the process of doing that as we speak. So if I move on to the telephone screenings there, May sixteenth and seventeenth. May twenty-first, we're looking forward to actually meeting candidates that move forward. Up to six candidates could move forward into that first interview. And our first interview is quite extensive. In fact, each candidate has three different interviews and is here for half a day. So we actually have twenty-two people that are involved on the teams. They represent teachers and support staff from the two buildings, principals and district-level administrators. So, you know, you'd never want to put any candidate in front of twenty-two people. So we break up in three teams and there's three different interviews. So by the time we're done with that first interview, we have a lot of information about the candidates. With that, we move on to reference checks and then a half-day process for second interviews. And we would bring two to four candidates back during that process. We hope to schedule site visits. We are pretty late in the process in the school year, so I don't know if we'll be able to do that the first week of June. But we will attempt to, if that's possible, based on their schedules, wherever they're coming from. Or if they're in our district as well, because we do have internal candidates who have, teachers who have applied for positions to be considered. And then at June eleventh, we hope to come back and make two recommendations to fill both of those principal positions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. President, just one question. You said there were forty applicants?
Over forty.
Over forty. And can you just give us a breakdown, the percentage, how many of those were in-house from existing employees or out of the district?
Well, so off the top of my head.
That, that's fine.
Okay. About twenty, twenty-five percent, maybe. Is that right? Wait, let me just think about, a little less than that. Our internal, that's not, that's not quite what it is. But we have a handful of internal candidates. How about I put it that way?
Thank you. I just wanted to know if most of them were coming from outside.
And the rest are all from outside. Thank you.
Any other questions, or Mary, regarding this process? I just, I'll just make a comment quickly that this is one of the most comprehensive processes that, that I've ever seen. And frankly, this is a process that we have used pretty very regularly, ongoing. And the results of a process like this are, are testimony to the principals that we have in our school district, which I think, I think are some of the best. So I think the process is merited. So thank you.
We, we've condensed the process this time certainly in a much smaller window, which is challenging for candidates. It's also challenging for the district. But it's worth it since we do want to get new principals on board as soon as possible.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Brian?
A question for the superintendent. So Mary, is that, the number of candidates we received, is that, was that an impressive number? Was that an average number? You know, any kind of feeling for the, kind of the quality of the candidates we're recruiting or that are generating interest, have interest in our district?
Well, Brian, how I would answer it, really the number doesn't mean much. It is the, as you got to, it's the quality of those candidates. And we're reviewing that now. So I'm really not prepared to really give you an assessment of that yet. We'll know more about that in a couple days.
I'd be interested. Thanks.
All right, and moving on, I just wanted to let you know that the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services has added to their executive board, associate, not Associate Director, Director of Student Services, Cory McIntyre. And he will be in charge of professional development for the organization and looking at coordinate, coordinating to. at coordinate, coordinating two state conferences. It's a very large job, and we know that he's up for the challenge.
Congratulations, Corey. That's wonderful. Did you report? All right, thank you, Mary. Moving on then to Item Six, reports. So start with Sandy's Secondary Chinese Program update.
Thank you, and I'll ask our teacher, Donna Kelly, along with her team of Chinese students, to step up to the mic. And we thank you for this opportunity to update you on Chinese in the Hudson School District.
I don't know the Chinese language, so you can just come up. And we're just going to have one student give her self-introduction. I'd like to introduce my students.
Could you just step to the mic, ma'am?
Oh, sorry, hi.
Thanks very much.
Ni hao, wushu kou lao shi. I'm Teacher Kelly, and these are a mix of my students from the middle and the high school, and I just want to commend them. They've come a long way in the last year. And so we have Claire, she's going to give her self-introduction tonight. But we have Connor, Ava, Grady, Nick, Brett, and Rena. And some of these students are actually going to, some of these students, I'm sorry, Hannah, debetchi. They're going to be going to China in two thousand and fourteen. So I have already eleven students signed on, so it's going to be quite a journey, and we're going to be building up for that for next year.
All right. Diane, next slide. In two thousand and eight, the school board adapted the Strategic Vision HSD 2025. The board selected two of our graduate learner outcomes as initial priorities, one of those being global literacy. So in the fall of two thousand and nine, we brought a third language to the Hudson School District, Mandarin Chinese. Next slide. In our global economy, the study of culture and the ability to communicate in a second language is essential for all students. Career opportunities also expand for students who can communicate in a second language. Next. This is our fourth year of implementation, started in two thousand and nine, ten. So we had Spanish and German, so students had a semester of each at that time as a seventh grade exploratory. Now they have a trimester of Spanish, a trimester of German, a trimester of Chinese. And then we have added through the years, Level One Mandarin to Level Two, Level Three, and now we're up to Level Four. Next year, we'll be offering a combined Three and Four. So we'll let Donna and her students take it away. Next slide.
First of all, I also want to thank, besides the students, the parents that have been very supportive in all of our endeavors, and all of you for supporting Chinese language and our principals, Principal Love and Principal Coach. I just want to say thank you, and Sandy as well, and Nancy Sweet. And so how to say thank you in Chinese is xie xie. Everybody give them a xie xie. Xie xie. This is a picture up here of our middle school and high school students, and this was a trip that we took to the Minneapolis Institute of Arts when we got to see the Terracotta Soldier Warriors from Xi'an. They had brought them to the Institute of Arts. And so that was a really huge day. We also got to go to a Chinese buffet, and the students really got to see some of the characters and artifacts, as well as the Terracotta Soldiers, and they got to be together. And it was a very bonding day, I would say. So I am trying to develop this program with the standards in mind, the five Cs from the American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages. And I demand a lot from my students, as they know, they have to, they have to use Chinese language in multiple modes, and they've been really producing language as well as learning language. You'll probably see that tonight in some of the slides that we have coming up. We can continue. Students will develop language skills that are applicable to real-life situations using the target language. So with the China trip in mind and just everyday use, I am really trying to develop a curriculum that has the students learning useful language, as well as creative language. Our goals are matched with the Hudson goals, to reach and collaborate with Common Core Curriculum, goals and state standards, to build transferable skills between all of the languages taught. We have a very strong Spanish and German program, and I have been really fortunate to work with those teachers in aligning what I teach in my classroom with what they're teaching. So it's been working out really well. And mostly, I'm trying to use curriculum that engages and motivates the students. And I have to say, they're motivating to me as well. So it's kind of a collaboration, especially with all the technology and things I don't understand, and the students will come up and say, Ms. Kelly, this is all you do. So it's been really a collaborative experience, I feel. Thank you, students. Okay. Here is a slide from seventh grade exploratory. So we start out with some real basics, where they learn to write their name, the date of their birth. So it's really fun. They also learn the pinyin system, it's kind of like an English spelling system with tones. So Chinese is definitely different than Spanish and German, but it's definitely attainable. I am not Chinese. I learned Chinese language in high school myself, and I went to China numerous times to study, and I majored in college in Chinese. So if I can do it, anybody can do it. So we have, yes, levels one, two, three in the high school right now, and we recently made a costume purchase, and we're striving to do a fashion show. We're still acquiring that language, and that will be one of the assessments. Here's an example of student work. Another thing that I promote is the use of technology, because most of the, actually, most of the Chinese, they actually use the computers, and so I've showed them access to the computer systems of Chinese language. And again, some of the students have shown me things that I didn't even know about for accessing Chinese. Now, this is the Level Three students, and Hannah is one of the students who produced this work. So I had the students use three different famous characters, and they utilized the language that we were using in the classroom, and they made up their own stories. And they were very creative. We're going to China, June nineteenth through July second, so it's a two-week, we're going to Xi'an, Beijing, and Shanghai. There is a homestay experience, and as well as going to these three major sites, and I think that that will promote exchange between and connections between China and the United A journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step. This is Sam Kelchran, right, Napton Voight. Both of them are in the eighth grade middle school, first-year Chinese. And I have to say, they're just doing extraordinarily well. And a lot of energy from these students. So this, again, I'm really excited to work with these students. And we could press the link. Now, I will show you a little video that, actually, I didn't make the video. I took a lot of the photos, but my student comprised this, she put this together.
Are we in the way? Do you guys want to crouch so that the audience can see?
Yeah.
Just to make sure we have.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Thank you for watching that. Now luckily, we have a live version of that, and we'll just end with Claire Pachek, if she can come up.
Hachek.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My English is not so good. Okay.
Hi, I'm Claire Pachek. I'll just do a short impromptu English introduction. I would just, I'll keep it short. I would say for anybody who is apprehensive to enjoy Chinese, to join Chinese, because it's a very tedious language, and it's maybe a bit more demanding than, well, not the workload, but Spanish and English are much, I mean, Spanish and German are much more closely related to English, and Chinese is a bit more out there. I can generally say, not just because my teacher's sitting here, I've never not enjoyed a day of Chinese, and I find that it's, though it is demanding, it's also very rewarding. Anyway, so this is my Chinese introduction, and we've developed it over a number of months, and I hope I do it well. So I'll just start. Dàjiā hǎo, wǔ jiāo bái kàn lùa. Wǒ yì jiù 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 nian bā yuā qiā hǎo qū shēng de, wú shù tū. Wǒ shì sǎn suì, wǒ shì shuā shēng zài hé dōu sān. Zhōng shè, zhōng shè, shēng bā nián jǐ. Wǒ xī huán sū shì, wǒ bù xī huán mǎ. Wǒ pa lùrì zhāi zi ài wá de. Wǒ zhōng lái yáo zuò étníng stüdiān. Wǒ jiā yǒu sōu gērén, wǒ jiā yǒu bā bā, mā mā, yì gē zhě zhě hē wǒ. Wǒ bā bā shì tóxikologis, wǒ mā mā shì lao shi. Wǒ jiě jiě shì shuā shēng. Wǒ bā bā sān shì jiě shuì, wǒ mā mā sān shì jiě shuì. Wǒ jiě jiě shì wú shuì. Wǒ jiā yǒu liáng zhēr mǎ, wǒ liáng zhēr mǎ dōu shì bā shuì. Wǒ zài liú diǎn zhōng qī chuāng, wǒ zài liú diǎn shí wú fān fēn zhōng chū zhà fān. Wǒ zài qī diǎn zhōng shēng shuō. Wǒ zài, wǒ jiāo shì ái diǎn zhōng chū wú fān. Wǒ zài liáng diǎn bān fēn shuō. Wǒ zài sān diǎn zhōng chū wú fān. Wǒ zài qī diǎn zhōng zuò gēng kě. Wǒ zài jiù diǎn zhōng shù jiào. Xie xie dà jiā bái kàn lùa. And. I was a bit nervous, so I stumbled a bit. It was a lot better, actually, in her class, but I have to say, it didn't go too badly. If I'm not taking too much time, oh, thank you. I'll tell you a bit of what, you know, I'll summarize it, because if I say it in Chinese, it's not grammatically correct in English, actually. I introduced myself in my Chinese name, which is bái kàn lùa, which actually means trapped six, which I don't think is right, because that's Google Translate version. I told you that I'm a student at Hudson Middle School, and I'm in the eighth grade. I told you my birthday, which is August seventh, nineteen ninety-nine. I also told you about what I like, which is sushi, what I don't like, which is math, sorry. And then I also told you about what I fear, which was, that was the large body of water portion. I could say it in Chinese, but I'm not immaculate on my pronunciation in that, so I decided to go with the safer version. I also, excuse me, I also said what I want to be in the future, which is an ethnic studiàn. I told you about my family, which are sitting right there. I also told you about my cats, because I love cats. I also told you about my schedule for the day, when I wake up, when I eat, when I go to bed. That, and that part was particularly difficult for me, but I feel like I've really improved substantially. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Wow. Wow. That is amazing.
Okay, students, if you come up, if you have any questions?
Wow. How do you, how can you be an eighth grader and speak like that? That's amazing.
Well, I aspire to be Asian someday, so I thought I, I'm trying really hard to be, so, and I'm really, I'm going, I'm actually, I'm going on the trip to China next year, so I'm working really hard at it. And like I said before, the workload is demanding, but it's also very rewarding, because it feels really nice when I read it upstairs to all you nice people. I also have it in characters as well, and I could have read it off the characters, that probably would have been more impressive, but.
I don't know what could have been more impressive.
Sorry, they're right, they're right here. I can let other.
That was wonderful, thank you. I'd like to hear from any of the other students as well about what made you interested in Mandarin Chinese? What draw you to it?
Hi, my name is Connor, and I am also going on the Chinese trip next year, or next summer. What drew me to going into Chinese is certainly like Claire said, that it is so much different in its sound of language, Latin language. It's so much different than Spanish or German, which uses a Latin alphabet. Instead, you have to learn to read from characters, which I felt was a more challenge, and I need a challenge to do, so.
Wonderful.
That's why I chose Mandarin.
Thank you. Other board members, do you have any questions of these students? Just fantastic. Just, I remember, this is really what, I know that my brother down here at the end of the table, Brian Bell, was one of the inspirations, I think, for, to introduce Chinese into our district, and he happens to travel to China on a fair number of occasions, so I'm sure he's proud as punch today, seeing the advancement and what's happening. Thank you, Donna, so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Just a minute. So thank, Donna, I want to thank you particularly, because it's not, it's not easy for us to find qualified staff in this field as well. So I really appreciate your efforts. So, okay, Brian.
No, it's, it's great, it's great to see. No, it was something that, like nine years ago, I remember, particularly when I was running for school board, it was, I spent a lot of time in China, and every time I went to China, I had to have an interpreter, right? I was in Guangzhou, Shenzhen, Dalian, you know, all through China, and eating snake, you know, eating crazy food, right? But I always had to have interpreter with me. And then, and then I, you know, learned more and more about China, that there's more graduates from China speak English than there are graduates from the US speak English. And clearly, we had to get, you know, it's just something we had to focus on. One of my challenges, though, is just the, I'm just interested in, in the, you know, how many people in the program? Is it expanding? Any comments on that, Donna?
Well, okay, we have the exploratory students, so there's about a hundred and fifty of those at any given time, times three throughout the, throughout the year. But then we have about sixty-five to seventy students in the high school and twenty in the middle school.
Is that, is that number staying kind of consistent, or is it growing, or?
I think it's going to take the China trip and possibly another year for more growth. That's why we're combining the three and four next year.
Yeah. I like the stuff like the sidewalk, I think we have to, you know, just find ways, it's just, it's so new.
Yeah, we have to find ways to connect it to the students' interests, and so I'm seeing what they're doing in the Spanish and German, but then I'm adding my own flavor of what, I like to do things that are very tactile, and it seems to really appeal to a lot of the students, the things that we're doing in the class, so, and music, and having them be the creators, too. So it seems to be catching on.
Yeah, my nephew is, took Chinese all through high school and college. Now he's, he's working in, he lives in Beijing, you know.
Really? We need to connect with him.
Yeah, I will connect with him when you're, when you're out there. But, and my brother, and my other brother is a venture capitalist, and he's headquartered in Beijing.
Wow.
And his job is he goes to like Beijing, you know, Beijing, Peke University, Sh, let's see here, a bunch of universities in Beijing, and invests in entrepreneurs in China, because you've always, there's so many entrepreneurs that come out of these Chinese universities and funds these companies, you know. There's just so much going on there that, and I don't think we understand as much out here, you know, in Western Wisconsin. So I do think we have to, you know, promote the program, you know, and anything you can do, and all the students are, you know, you know, we need, we need to kind of spread the word, too, right? So I think it's, I think a lot of your classmates just so new to them. So I think it's, I think a lot of your classmates just so new to them and they go, oh, Spanish and German's easier, right? And, but now you're going to China, so that's pretty cool, you know, so, that's some comments I have about, I'm really excited to see it. I, I just hope it, it grows.
I think it will and I think there's, every time I meet the parents at the conferences, there's so many China connections and a lot of times people will say, oh yeah, we were stationed in China or we have business in China and some of the students have even lived in China and so they come to the classes with some prior knowledge of Chinese language. So I'm finding that that's going to be increasing more, especially in Hudson.
That's great, I was, I was really impressed with, with the work that you guys have been doing, so thanks. It was a good, good update, appreciate it.
Can I just have the parents stand up? I just want to say thank you to them as well.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, parents.
谢谢。
Can I say what? Just introduce your, why don't you guys just introduce yourselves, say your name.
我是冯南柯.
In English, hello, my name is Nick Ferguson.
谢谢。
你好，我叫王春宁. That means hello, my name is Connor, Sonic.
大家好，我叫Claire. 嗯，Pachek, by the way. 大家好 is just the formal version of你好, because this feels formal, and then I just said I am called Claire Pachek, because that's my name.
你好，我叫Hi.
That means hi, my name is Grady.
你好，我叫Red. That means my, hi, my name's Red.
大家好，我叫白月发. Means hi, my name's Eva.
你好，我叫Rina. And it means hello, my name is Rina.
你好，我叫毕珊珊. Which means hi, my name is Hannah.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I make a comment?
Yes, one comment from Sandy.
All right. To these students.
Just Miss Sandy.
This Sandy. I just want to say that I've had people ask me what the heck is this Chinese Mandarin being taught in the Hudson schools and I've had to say, I don't have a clue. But now, thanks to you outstanding students, I do know what it is. And so now when they ask me, I can tell them that this is an outstanding class being taught in Hudson that's training our young people for a global economy in the future. Thank you to the teacher and all of you who are involved. I'm impressed.
Thank you, Sandy, well said, thank you. No, the other Sandy.
All right, and I'll have our team step up to the table. Diane, get back to the board. You okay? About two years ago, the Learning Services Team, which is Dave, Sandy and I, Dave, Sandy and I, Dave, Ann and I, eh. We met to revisit our purpose, our roles and our outcomes and pretty much asked the question, how can we strengthen our system for learning in Hudson School District? We landed on the need to focus on assessment and to build a bridge between teaching, learning and assessment. Next slide, Diane. The result was the restructuring of three committees that we already had in place, the district curriculum facilitators, the assessment committee and a report card committee. And we formed then the teaching, learning and assessment, or what we refer to as the TLA team. We established outcomes and discussed the need to support, reinforce and deepen thinking as we move through the anticipated changes and move towards implementation.
The visual you see in front of you is one that you're all becoming quite familiar with, it seems every time I step to the mic, I'm talking about this visual, but that's a good thing because it represents a lot of the work that we'll be doing. And what again represents is the restructuring of learning support services. And if you notice in that center circle with the four sections, the lower right-hand corner there says quality assessment. And quality assessment practices are so vital, as Sandy alluded to, as assessment serves as the bridge between teaching and learning. And as we expand a little bit on that visual, there was a mission statement above that and I'd like you to take just a moment to read that mission statement. And what you will notice in the middle of three words, teaching, learning and assessment, that is the vital work of our district. And this team, the TLA team, you're going to have the, the opportunity to hear from three outstanding teacher leaders that will speak to the work that we're all doing as the teaching, learning and assessment team, but it is an absolute pleasure. And you know, there's a lot of things that we face in the world of education and specifically in the state of Wisconsin and occasionally I think it could get someone down if they let it. I was so motivated and engaged with the work that this team was doing the other day when we had a meeting, it was absolutely inspiring. It's, here we are as we're getting to the end of the year and the weather's finally nice and we have this room full of teacher leaders engaged in difficult work and they did it with smiles on their face, sharing their talents and their skills. It was, it was just wonderful, you're going to hear a little bit of that tonight.
Dave mentioned the group that we met with last Thursday afternoon. They've met together three times this year and we're learning the half-day just doesn't cut it. They don't tire of the work that they're doing or they don't talk about being tired, but they leave, I think, invigorated and I'm pleased to work with them. The team is about 30 teachers, including our instructional coaches at all three levels, and it's balanced between elementary, middle and high school and gender-wise in departments. We wanted a really wide representative sample because, and I'm going to date myself here, but if you know the old Breck shampoo commercial, you tell one and they tell one, that's the effect we're trying to achieve with these, as Dave called them, exemplary teacher leaders. We invited, we asked actually three of them to come, but there's, there's 27 behind them, but they're going to tell you a little bit more about what they're learning and it's kind of a three-stage process with any teacher leader group. We begin by learning and reading together and studying, focused on our graduate learner outcomes, and then we model it, we try it out in our own classrooms and then we share it with our colleagues. And they're in the transition of learning to modeling to sharing next year.
One of the things that we have been doing as, as we learn, as we've been going back to our schools and working with our teams of teachers, not only doing it in our classroom, but also sharing. And one of the things we, as we go through the, at the middle school, we've been doing, and all the schools have been doing is the common summative assessments and then working into the common informative assessments where all of us are doing the same formative assessments when we get together, we can talk. And it talks about the tier-one guarantees that all teachers will be doing these types of things in the classroom.
Do you want to go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name is Tim Chuckle and I teach seventh grade at Hudson Middle School, math. Okay. And the other things that has been going on is, you know, with identifying all of us through our curriculum.
We're going to need the mic, Tim, I'm sorry.
We have been identifying our clear learning targets for our curriculum areas, really working on getting that focused in so that our students know and can identify exactly what they're going to learn. And I think one of the things we've always talked about is having the students own their education instead of the teacher just saying, this is what you're supposed to learn, the students are actively engaged in those types of activities. And through everything that we've been doing, we've really been discussing that in our large group, in the TLA group, to, to get that into practice and then start working on our own and become, you know, experts at it so we can take the next step where we can also do that, you know, and train the staff in the buildings that we work in. Oh, yeah, thank you. I didn't see that inside there. Right up here is a slide that, you talk about the ownership, after a formative assessment in the classroom, each hour, each question was literally tabulated, who got it right, who got it wrong. And then we could actually, our goal is to get at least 80% or better on any given question and any given learning target. And we put that right in front of the students so they can actually see on a daily, how they did themselves, how they did against, you know, the other classes, what are the learning targets that as a whole we need to work on? And it's there in front of them the whole time as we go through a unit and they know what the learning targets are, they know exactly what they need to work on, what, and when it comes to actually preparing for your own examinations and saying, here's the things I have, here's the things I really don't know very well, now let's work on getting there with that. And so it's right in front of them and a lot, and a lot of teachers are doing this in different ways through clickers where, you know, they have the little clickers and you can take a formative assessment and the students will respond and the data's right there in front of them. To more of an impromptu, right on the whiteboard, I transferred this data right on the whiteboard and so the kids see it right there in real time. The last thing is the book, the last thing, I'm sorry, I lost track on the PowerPoint, is the book we've been reading, Embedded Formative Assessments, I will, two things that I got from it, one is students really owning their knowledge and really as a, as a teacher, really, you know, having them become, it's a partnership. And the other thing is I've been reading this, at the middle school, we do a, the first 15 minutes of our PAT time, everybody reads because one of our smart goals is to increase our reading, our literacy with the students. And I've been reading this while they've been doing their reading, whatever books they've had and the kids looked at this and they said, Mr. Chuckle, that can't be very exciting. And they look, I said, well, I said, you know what, I said, as teachers, we're continuing learning to make it, you know, the opportunities for you better in the classroom and for ourselves too. And I says, and just to let you know, there are times that I'll read the same sentence over and over and over again to make sure I'm getting it because sometimes it can be pretty weighty and meaty stuff. But to let them know that we're continually learning and growing too as professional educators.
I'm Shannon Sexy, I teach kindergarten at EP Rock. I can speak a little bit about the book that we read too. Part of our job as the committee is we, we went into different groups and explored different assessment strategies. And so we were to pick, pick a strategy from the book and go to that group. And I chose a group that was really small, just because I thought, oh, well, that one's small, I'll put myself in there. And it happened to be formative use of summative assessment. And so for a kindergarten teacher, that was a little bit, a little bit of a challenge, but, and Lisa happened to be in my group and we, we really learned a lot and this really lends itself to working with, you know, groups from kindergarten through 12th grade, I really value that experience. But what we found is where Lisa took a group of kids and gave a summative assessment, gave it back to them without grading it and then let them work collaboratively, collaboratively in groups to sort of see if their answers changed or if they would change it. My job as a kindergarten teacher, I scaled that way back and just sort of embedded the language of working collaboratively and what that looks like, what that sounds like, what that feels like, and then also teaching the kindergartners how to give feedback because that's part of, that's part of the formative assessment process. So that was another thing that we got out of, that we took away from the book and worked together as a K-12 team. As far as developing learning progressions and cornerstone assessments for our graduate learner outcomes, we had a couple of big tasks, I think, in just three times. One of our big, one of our big tasks was working in a mixed grade level group on a particular graduate learner outcome, be it global literacy or environmental sustainability or whatever. And we mapped it all out, like what are the big ideas that we want the kids to, to come away with? What are the enduring understandings and what is that going to look like from K all the way up to 12? So that was a, that was a good learning group or group activity for us. And then the last time we met, we actually took a different graduate learner outcome and then mapped it out a little bit as far as assessments, exploring different techniques and kind of making sure that, that the assessments that we would match with that would, that would contain a good depth of knowledge and, and some cognitive rigor. So they weren't just, you know, easy paper pencil, but just some, you know, involve some cognitive rigor. So really, I guess the, one of the most valuable parts for me is, is the collaboration with, you know, elementary, middle school, high school groups. And as a side note, my kindergarten class is actually part of the class of 2025, so HSD 2025 has now begun officially in kindergarten this year, so that's kind of a fun side note. Okay, the next slide. This just sort of gives a visual as far as how the knowledge and the complexity will sort of increase. And so as teachers, when you look at how students are going to demonstrate their understanding, it gets a little more complex as, as the grade levels increase. So second grade, their assessments are going to be, you know, this big, but in between, we need to be doing what we, what we can, be it, you know, more or less just kind of keeping the common language, I guess, in between.
All right, this next outcome that's expected is basically just being a resource or someone to consult to, you know, other people within our building. Every, you know, so often we have to do curriculum revision, so as leaders of this group, one of our roles is going to be to help bring back the focus of using UBDs and making sure that our learning targets are clear for our students, that the assessments that we are giving will definitely show improvement and knowledge in those different learning outcomes and just being a resource to help bring that back. And then also just being a resource. As was mentioned, I did a quiz kind of a thing and then I gave it back to them and let the kids work in groups and just listening to them was probably the best part of my day, just listening to them and work with each other and it was very interesting to see how many kids changed their answers. They got persuaded to change their answer to the wrong answer. And, you know, and it was just kind of that nice for some kids to see like, wow, I really did know what I was talking about, you know, I wish I wouldn't have done that, you know, and things like that. And it wasn't, I wanted to make it not a high-risk kind of assessment, but it was very valuable for me to see that. And as soon as I got done that day, I ran right across, my room is separated with another science teacher by just a little closet and I ran right over there and I'm like, Patty, you got to try this. Just at least once and see how it works for you and, because I learned a lot in just doing it one time, different things that I would change and adapt to make it work maybe a little bit better or I used the feedback that I got from the students, I gave them a little exit slip and asked them what they liked, what they didn't like. So definitely something I want to, you know, be a leader in, just giving out all of these different types of assessments that we're trying out to spread the word about how good those are. Go ahead, next one. This last, or not the last one, this next outcome, we haven't had an opportunity yet to get too in-depth with. We did about, about two years ago, go to a conference where Tom Guskis spoke and he is kind of a leader in how we report grades and stuff like that to students, parents and other individuals. And he was very inspiring to me, made me question, why am I grading this assignment? What's the purpose of this assignment? Is this assignment telling me about the, the student's knowledge or is it telling me about their behavior? Oh, they got it done, kind of a thing. And so really kind of made me start to question how we do report cards, especially at the high school level. We don't necessarily have a very good way right now of separating behavior versus actual knowledge. And so that's something that I'm looking forward to working with and how can we maybe separate the two better so that we get more focused on, you know, a grade as to what does the student actually know versus what are kind of behavioral things that we're trying to achieve with students as well.
You can tell that they're passionate about what they do. Lisa mentioned risk. There is an element of risk in it for all of them to go back and try something they haven't tried before, but we identified early on, the greatest need was that student engagement piece, that the students owned it and could assess and tell them what their strengths were. And they dove into it and I was excited about their response to it and excited about, when I hear them talk about telling their colleagues about it. Their ultimate job really is to take what they learn and try out and then help other colleagues in the district make it a tier-one guarantee, which means every child, every classroom, every teacher is practicing this quality assessment work. Assessment really does bridge teaching and learning, that's really how we started the whole process. Teaching, we used to focus on what, well, I taught it, I covered it, I got it out there, but we don't know for sure that the child learned it until we assess. So it's a critical component of good quality instruction. Any questions?
Questions of the board, from the board? Outstanding work, it's, thank you so much for this, this initiative that you're, you're taking on, so I appreciate it very much. Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Examination.
Thank you.
You can tell that they're passionate about what they do. Um, Lisa mentioned risk. There is an element of risk in it for all of them to go back and try something they haven't tried before. Um, but we identified early on, the greatest need was that student engagement piece, that the students owned it and could assess and tell them what their strengths were. And they dove into it. And I was excited about their response to it and excited about the, when I hear them talk about telling their colleagues about it. Their ultimate job really is to take what they learn and try out and then help other colleagues in the district make it a tier-one guarantee, which means every child, every classroom, every teacher is practicing this quality assessment work. Assessment really does bridge teaching and learning. That's really how we started the whole process. Teaching, we used to focus on what, well, I taught it, I covered it, I got it out there. But we don't know for sure that the child learned it until we assess. So it's a critical component of good quality instruction. Any questions?
Questions of the board, from the board? Outstanding work. It's, uh, thank you so much for this, this initiative that you're, you're taking on. So I appreciate it very much. Okay. Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Examination.
Thank you.
Results?
All states are required to administer annual tests in reading and mathematics for students in every grade three through eight and at least once in high school. Wisconsin schools initiated the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts, Concepts Exams in reading and math in fall of two thousand and five. You might recall this slide from last, last year. As part of the transition, the state of Wisconsin has changed how the WKCE scores are benchmarked. The National Assessment of Educational Progress has established levels of achievement that Wisconsin will now use to benchmark the state test. These changes affect all students in Wisconsin so that our student math and reading scores can be held to national standards versus state. This means that across the state, we have much lower performance than in the past. The lower performance is not unique to our school district. It was a statewide drop. The new cut scores are more realistic to the demands of the twenty-first century. Student abilities have not changed. Only the cut scores for each level have changed. That's why the picture of the thermometer, an, an analogy would be temperature. The temperature stays the same, but there are two ways to report it out, Celsius or Fahrenheit. So a temperature of twenty degrees Celsius is sixty-eight degrees Fahrenheit. Similarly, a score of ninety last year is approximately fifty in reading and sixty in math this year. We did, when we sent home our individual scores this spring, we did send a letter explaining the change in scores. And really, we had very few, if no responses from our parents. They, they know that they have other data that they can rely on for knowing their student performance. Now to demonstrate the difference, I'll have Diane go to the next slide. This is actually fall twenty-eleven. Please note, fall twenty-eleven. So this is what our scores looked like last year. And you can see pretty much in the ninetieth percentile all across the board and the state being about in the eightieth. Then Diane, if you go to the next slide, you'll see now we are sitting at more the fiftieth percentile in proficient and advanced, and the state is down about at the thirty-fifth. Now similarly to what I've shared with you before in the past, you have to look at each grade level separately. They were all designed when they were first developed with, with proficiency cut scores as separate grade levels. There is nothing that goes across the similar from grade level to grade level. In addition, we also just want to keep looking at the difference between the state and Hudson. So if you look at third grade, we're sixteen point eight points above the state. In fifth grade, fourteen point six. In eighth grade, sixteen point five. Those are some nice differences between Hudson School performance and the state of Wisconsin. Next slide. Similarly, you'll also see the same then in mathematics, but the new national cut scores have us landing more at this, in the sixtieth percentile, approximately sixty-fifth in mathematics, and the state scoring more at around the forty-fifth to fiftieth. Again, if we look at the gap between the district and the state, there's a twenty-point spread in fifth grade, a fifteen point one in seventh grade, and a fifteen point spread in tenth grade as well. I'm not able tonight to do too much with trend data. The state is moving from, some of you may have been to the WINS site off of the DPI, and they're moving to a new format called Y- dash, and it's not up and running. It was supposed to be public, but it's not. So right now there is no trend data that I can share with you. What I am, was able to go in and dig was some trend data on just our advanced category. And you can see with this example, in grade three reading, in two thousand and eight, we had seven point three percent of our students in the advanced category. And now this year and last year, we're at nine point four. In the next slide, another example would be eighth grade math. You can see there's a seven point eight percent increase from two thousand and eight up to nineteen point five. And then one more, looking at that advanced category. Mathematics, tenth grade, again, we had fifteen percent in advanced, in the advanced category in two thousand and eight and up to seventeen point six. So we're constantly striving to put, push more students up into that advanced category. Next slide. In two thousand and six, we began benchmarking Hudson against high-performing districts in the state. And three years ago, we added an additional benchmark with comparable-sized districts in the state. Specifically, we have Franklin Public, Germantown, Menominee Falls, and McQuanigo. And so here's a few examples comparing ourselves here. So first, we have grade four reading, and you can see there's only one district that outperforms us in proficient and advanced, and then two districts in the advanced-only comparison. So you can see that it's, can be a little deceiving when you just do the proficient and advanced and then you pull out just the advanced because there's some flipping there from, uh, who are the higher performing districts when it's both versus, uh, just the advanced category. And then the second example then is eighth grade reading. And again, you can see we're holding our own, we're tied for the top slot in proficient and advanced. And then only one district outscores us in the advanced-only category. Now if we compare ourselves to the highest performing districts in the state, and again, specifically, we've been looking for several years at Cedar Brook, Elm Brook, Kettle Moraine, McQuanthensville, and Whitefish Bay. You can see that we're holding our own with at least three of the districts in the advanced and proficient as well as the advanced-only category. Again, looking at fourth grade reading. And then next, the eighth grade reading. You can see again where we're, for the most part, holding our own in those comparable districts. And again, it's, there's no trend data here. It could show a different picture as, as we go over time. We are in the middle of a great transition right now as we go from WKCE. You've heard us talk before that in all honesty, we don't have a lot of value for our current state tests. We're very excited about when we move to the new smarter balanced assessment. So we look at these and we look at them in light of other assessments that are going on, but we don't put a lot of weight in WKCE currently. We're doing a lot of preparation right now, um, looking at the common state standards, which must be in place by two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. And then the assessment of the Common Core state standards will begin in the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year as well with the smarter balanced assessments. Recently, one of our sites was selected to be part of a strategic pilot. That was Hudson Prairie. And the staff has recently been sharing some of the learning that they have from following that assessment and discussing the shifts across the district that will be necessary to prepare for the assessments. Um, it is all computer-based. Um, the feedback that, uh, Ms. Prather received from students as they exited and others that were chatting with students, they found it very challenging. But it was one of those kind of challenging that they got excited about. I mean, it was really pushing their knowledge. So we're very excited about what we see coming with the new assessments. It's just to get us there in the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year. Next year, next fall, we continue with WKCE in the fall. And then we anticipate a field testing in the spring with the new smarter balanced and then being fully implemented in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. The other part that's associated with the WKCE then is the report cards currently for this year and next. And the public release of the report cards will be not until mid-September. So I just wanted you to know that information as well. And I'm open to any questions.
Questions? Sandy?
Mr. President, Sandy, can you tell me again what the difference is between the proficient and advanced and just the advanced?
I'd have to go back and get scale scores, but there's four levels. They have a minimal category, a basic, proficient, and advanced. So in the test then, it's a scale score. And so, and so it's just more of where the kids fall in that scale score that determines. So the proficient advance is taking in two of those categories and reporting it out. And the advanced is just taking the one category. I hope that's quite what you're looking for, but.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions and comments?
Is there any, is there any translation to these biographs that you just showed us on the advanced proficient and to exceed standards or significantly exceed standards, which will be shown in the report cards in September?
The test scores are just one piece of what goes into the report card. So you will see when we show those in September that the achievement on a WKCE is part of what goes into the calculation as well as the, the students that perhaps moved from basic to proficient or the students that moved from proficient to advanced. There's also student improvement that gives us some points. And then also closing gaps in some of our subgroups also gets us additional points. So it's a piece of what goes into the report card calculation.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, Sandy, for that report. Um, I will report on the, uh, the secondary space for learning regarding particularly the site and the development of our sites as we look at different options. As you're, I imagine aware that we are looking at different options for, um, uh, secondary solutions for us. Uh, one of, uh, one of those sites that, uh, one of the sites that we're considering, of course, is the site that the district owns at County Road, UU. Uh, one of the reasons why it wasn't a viable site originally was because it had limited, uh, uh, limited capabilities regarding capacity when we were looking at a major secondary school such as two thousand, twenty-five hundred students. Of course, now these, the options that we're looking at currently are, uh, are a little more diverse and looking at a variety of different options, which may bring UU back into play with us. But one of the things that we need to understand moving forward is, uh, the availability, the potential for city water and sewer. We know that without city water and sewer on that site, uh, the site has, uh, a fair amount of, uh, of limitations. And so, uh, what we've done as a facilities committee is, well, we've engaged conversation with three entities that have a, have a vested interest in this site. Uh, first of all, the town of Hudson, we've met with them individually and privately. We've also met with the, the county. And finally, we met with the city, uh, the city. Uh, in which, in each of those meetings, our attempt, our objective was to find out if they would be, if what the barriers were around this site, what are the things that we need to understand about this site in terms of, uh, the feasibility of, uh, putting water and sewer out there? In each of those entities, they have their own potent, potential issues that we need to understand. And of course, we want to understand their, uh, interest in trying to find a solution uh, around bringing water, uh, city water and sewer, uh, to that site. And so that we can understand what the capacities are on that site once we have, once we would have city water and sewer. So, uh, as I'd said, we met individually with those entities. And, uh, we, uh, of course, the city is probably the primary, uh, group that, uh, needs to weigh in on this. Uh, we've also met then with the, the common council of the city uh, to basically ask them if they would be willing to consider, um, looking at the potential of creating an op, an, an option for getting water, city water and sewer to that site, whether that would be a special water district or it would be, um, annexation or whatever, whatever it might be. We wanted to know if they would be willing to explore options with us. Or if, uh, it was just beyond the realm of feasibility for them and, uh, it's a done, it's, it's not an opportunity for us and then we would need to move on. So we had that meeting with the city and there was a, um, uh, I think a, a good tenor and, um, feeling amongst the city council that they wanted to do what they could, uh, to try to work with us. Uh, there are a number of obstacles and a number of challenges for them, of course, which may, they may not be able to overcome. But they're willing to look into it and work with us, uh, on in that. And so our attempt now, and, and what we, they've requested from us is an official letter, uh, to them uh, asking for this, uh, um, this potential for bringing water and sewer to the site from the city. And so we've produced that letter and it's, uh, ready to go out. And, uh, we're asking the, the city to, uh, 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 to consider any necessary analysis, reviews, and studies that the common council needs to determine the feasibility of our request. Such as engineering studies, uh, authority to extend utilities, infrastructure improvements that might be needed, uh, proposed utility rate charges, legal and, uh, procedural issues, uh, city ordinances, uh, and so forth. There are anything else that they feel they, uh, um, they need to, to resolve in terms of getting us to a point where we could actually conduct a feasibility study on that site. We don't want to spend money until they're ready to tell us, they're ready to, they're ready to, to, uh, work, uh, they can overcome the obstacles that, that are before them. And, uh, uh, then we would move forward with, uh, the consideration of this board would be considering then, based on what they find in terms of cost and scope, this board would consider then, um, uh, moving forward with the feasibility study, uh, which on the high end would take about six months. And so we are asking them to move as quickly as they can because it is time-consuming. But we don't want to, of course, put them in a position where, uh, it's unreasonable either. So that, uh, we, we, we now are beginning to then, after having met with the three separate entities, we'll bring that group, those groups together as one. And by the way, we did have conversation opportunity to talk to the intergovernmental, um, uh, uh, group as well and get their insights and feedback. Uh, but we will be bringing and, and organizing a meeting of this representatives from the city, the town, and the county, along with our representatives to determine a timeline for development, uh, uh, for the County Road, uh, UU property um, as a potential school site. So that's my report. Uh, happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Mr. President.
Dan.
I, I appreciate, um, the report and it certainly sounds like we're moving in the right direction with this. And I think it's something we need to do. I, I guess my question has to do with, it seems like there's some real critical issues with this, um, with this project that it seems like unless those critical issues are answered, everything else won't go anywhere. So I'm assuming that that's the direction you're moving because it seems like, you know, if we're going to try to deal with all of the different issues associated with this, along with all the different entities and governmental units, that this process could go on for, forever conceivably. So is it possible, and, and again, maybe you're moving in this direction, but to distill it down to some of the key issues or barriers potentially um, and, and working through those? And once we work through some of those key, um, issues or areas that then we can start, you know, addressing all the other issues involved. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I would just, uh, comment, Dan, that, uh, in talking with the, uh, town of Hudson, they really don't see any barriers. So they're, they're not, there, there's not the issues for them other than, uh, they would prohibit any kind of lighting on the site. And, uh, I think that was pretty much it. Was there another one? Lighting and sound. Sound was the other one that would be prohibitive to the town, but which really, we don't think is a, is a barrier that we can't overcome. The county, uh, again, also, you know, they had, they have, uh, there are certain, uh, easements and rights and there would affect some of that, uh, the, the County Road, UU, and having to, um, develop that or to expand that possibly. But again, they, they didn't give us any indication that there was really anything that, uh, was a barrier that they could see. It's really the city that, uh, has, uh, more of these issues. And, um, you know, some of them, some of the issues seem insurmountable in the sense that you, they have to do with ordinances, changing laws. But there were comments saying that those can be overcome too. So, uh, you know, I don't know, uh, what they're going to find. What I'm happy about and I appreciate with the cities is that there's a, there's a sense of will, of willingness to try to work with us. So, and whether that's actually going to be possible on their end. And in the end, when they, when they come back with what they find, is it possible for us to, uh, to, uh, to, to, to deal with anything that, that may be a challenge for us, such as the cost or whatever it might be? So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding that? Okay, thank you. Diane, do we have any citizens' requests to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, then we will move then to the topics for action number nine, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, open enrollment applications, Nancy.
Okay. At the January board meeting, you as the board approved space in grades three, four, and five. Thirty seats in grade three, twenty seats in grade four, eighty-four seats in grade five. Only, those were the only three grade levels determined to have space available for enrollment of non-district students. You also acted to approve the lack of special education space in grades early childhood through grade twelve. Now in January, this was a new requirement of the open enrollment law, which has changed periodically over the years. And it, it was a difficult analysis for the administration. It was a difficult decision for the board because the district is large enough and is dynamic in its enrollment. And to predict enrollment in January is difficult. But we used, as you might recall, we used existing students and moved them forward a grade. We did consider the context of our demographic work as well. And adjusted the number of sections that we projected that we would need the following year for our own Hudson resident students and from there determined the space available. What your task would be this evening would be to consider the thirty-five requests into, from non-residents into the Hudson School District. Given your actions in, in January, we would recommend, in alignment with those actions, three, that you would admit, three fourth grade applicants, numbers six, fifteen, and thirty-four. And four fifth grade applicants, numbers eleven, sixteen, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. And deny numbers one through six, seven through ten, twelve through fourteen, seventeen through twenty-six, and twenty-nine through thirty-four. Those are the requests in. The requests out are more numerous than the requests in. There are fifty-six requests out of the district. And given the space constraints of the school district, we would recommend approval of one through fifty-six. So approving all of those requests out. It might be, it would be of interest, I'm sure, to you to know that of the fifty-six applicants out, thirty-two are currently, currently in, in one of our schools. And two-thirds of those requesting out are secondary level students, either middle or high school. The rest would be students not currently attending, they're perhaps homeschooled or private school students and are not currently attending any of our Hudson schools. I don't know, Tim, if you'd like to offer some of the financial implications associated with the decisions and all the takes and questions, yeah?
Mr. President? Nancy, just a clarification, those students asking to come in, one through five is a denial and six is an acceptance?
Correct. Yes.
Mr. President? Nancy, can you? I'm confused why, like, let's just say on the out.
Let's look at number six, kind of middle of the page. So, district school attending is River Falls, applying to River Falls. How is that opting out of the district? It's confusing to me. And it's not just that one, there's several like that.
Well, that means that they are currently living in Hudson, but they are currently attending River Falls.
I see.
Or someplace else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. President? So these fifth graders that we, that the, you know, you're recommending here, Nancy, so they come in the fifth grade and the sixth grade were full.
Yeah. And likely to be full next year.
Right. So, we talk about this every time this comes up, but.
I know.
So those parents put their, you know, those, their, you know, children come into our district and we tell them we're full the next year. It doesn't, doesn't even pass, like, doesn't even pass, just makes me, gives me pause just thinking about that.
Doesn't it? The, at the bottom of the record in the board book, we do indicate, you know, the Department of Public Instruction has a form letter, it's a technology letter that Diane sends out. Whatever action you take, approving or denying. And we though go a little extra because of what your concern is. And tell parents that, remind them that they would be required to reapply before entering, in this case, sixth grade. And that there's no guarantee approval will be granted for middle school grades six through eight. And there is a likelihood that classroom space will not be available. So in fairness, they come into the situation knowing this. And in some cases, it is a one-year need, a temporary need on their part or a temporary interest.
Do we have, do we have any precedent with we're concerned about where we've allowed, where we, have we ever, you know, not, wherever, have we ever actually executed on that? Have we, have we said, hey, someone's in elementary school and we haven't let them get to the middle school? Do we have a history of doing that?
Yes.
Yep, thanks.
Mr. President? I guess one of the things that I wanted to ask about or bring up to talk about is, you know, if we deny these students open enrollment into our schools where we do have space, what's the appeal process? I mean, what, can you talk a little bit about the legal costs we could incur by not allowing them? I mean, I know we've set a precedent to not allow them where we don't have space, but where we do have space, what could be the repercussions of not allowing them in?
Where we do have space?
Where we do have space. So if we have space and we don't approve these students in.
Well, in this particular instance, and it's a unique phenomenon because the law changed. And so in January, you acted to determine that there was, that there was space in grades three, four, and five. And so if you were to take action tonight contrary to the action that you took in January, I think the district would certainly lose on appeal.
Thank you.
Can you describe, Nancy, the, is it a, is it a state statute to require, to have students permitted to come into the district if, if there is space available?
That's correct, that's correct. That's state statute going back to its origination. It is, that's the concept, if space is available, even though a district might prefer not to admit students from outside the district, the state statute would compel us to, would compel you to, if there was space available.
Why is it then that we have to vote on this? I mean, this seems like, if it's a law, it's, it's, it's a non-actionable item in my mind.
Yeah, the, the statute also includes timelines and specific actions that the board must take. And the first action was in January, the second is in, is in May. It's something, it's complicated as you know. And there are multiple sides, I guess, to the determination. You know, going forward, depending on where the district wants to go with this, you know, you can, you can establish policy that would, there's three different things you could do, but doesn't exist now in your policy. But one, one is that if, if you admit someone at any level, you can withdraw from policy the requirement that they reapply. Okay, that's, that's a local prerogative in our policy from the very beginning of its origination. The board then decided, and there's been a couple of revisions of policy that you've acted on since. The, the boards have decided to keep that in there to protect the district, to have another decision-making point in case growth were, you know, to be, as it is, quite a factor right now. So that's one decision, you can't make it tonight, but you could going forward, that would be one thing. The, another issue, another possibility is to introduce into policy a waiting list for grade levels that might open up after action is taken. I can think of only one grade level right now that might open up and that's kindergarten. We determined based on a three-year average and demographic projections, when you voted in January, that we only needed fifteen of the nineteen sections. Okay, and we calculated the space that we would have available. Since then, because of the registration which occurred after January and the enrollment has continued to grow in kindergarten, we reintroduced a second section of kindergarten at Holton, started with one. And we have reintroduced a fourth section at Rivercrest. So with that in mind, there would be approximately nineteen to twenty spaces. Now that's, that's without considering any further growth, which usually happens over the summer. And so we did contact the Department of Public Instruction to see if there was some kind of an option. They, they said you must stick to the decision that you made in January. Okay? However, if, if you had in policy a waiting list procedure, you could resolve to use that waiting list procedure to admit students after you approved and denied according to January until the third Friday count in September. Now that, that's not available to you tonight because we don't have that in policy. But that's something you could consider next year before the application process goes out. It's a management issue to keep track of that, but to adapt, to follow a waiting list that would follow the priorities of currently enrolled students, siblings of students that perhaps might be of interest, interest to you. The other is, and this was an option for you back in 2010 when we had the policy completely reviewed and analyzed legally and the revisions were made legally. And that is that you do have the option in the law that if, even though space isn't available, you could adopt into policy later, next year, to admit students currently enrolled and their siblings. You can do that. When the attorney reviewed the statute and proposed revisions to the policy, he discouraged that. Because you can't pick and choose. You know, one currently enrolled student and their sibling and ignore the others. You're compelled, and that's that arbitrary and capricious standard, you're compelled then to admit them all. And so you'll have to make some kind of determination in terms of the vulnerability of the district if you introduce that back, well, it was never in there, but if you introduce it into policy. So I wanted to make sure you knew about that tonight. But you can't, we can't use it tonight and we can't use the waiting list tonight either. It would have to be something for your policy consideration next year.
Okay. Tim, did you have some numbers to report?
Yeah, I did. Just looking at, Nancy and I looked at the past four years of history and what's actually happened between the applications that were approved and then what happened in the follow-through. So if you look at the ins and the outs, the, for those that applied and were approved by the board in the past four years, on average, somewhere in the mid to upper forties actually follow-through and do go elsewhere, come into the district or go out of the district.
Less than half.
Yeah, so a little less than half. And so, you know, of course, there's a financial impact to this. And the state estimate currently for thirteen, fourteen is about a six thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars. And that's their estimate, that won't be final for a while yet. But applying that and then applying percentages based on the past history, we, there would be a net, a net cost out to the district of about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. But again, you have policy and law to follow. But it's just worth noting the impact, financial impact of the open ins and open outs.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I had two questions on, one on Tim's point that he just made with regard to the financial impact. That's if we approve all fifty-six of the outs and the seven people applying to come in.
Well, that's a good, that's a good question and the answer, the answer is no. This is just looking at those in the past, again, we went back and looked at four years' worth of history.
Trend.
And so we looked at those that were approved and then what happened after those students went through the, at the application process, the board approved or denied. And so just taking the ones that were approved, somewhere between forty, mid-forties to upper forties actually followed through. And so we based the numbers, the financial impact on, on those, on what actually happened rather than what's here on paper. Because what is on paper and what you approve doesn't always come to fruition in the end.
Maybe I wasn't clear on my question. I understand that you're taking less than half of those that get approved actually go. But what I'm saying is when you say those students, you're talking about both the inbound requests and then the outbound. And the net effect of that is that we lose a hundred and forty-eight thousand, likely to lose, based on the last past trends of who actually follows through.
Right, yeah, that'd be correct.
And at six thousand four hundred, did you say?
About six thousand four forty-eight is the estimate that DPI has out for next year.
And so for each application that's not followed through on, for an inbound, that's, we would lose that, correct? That number would go up?
Yeah, you wouldn't lose it, you just wouldn't get it.
You wouldn't get it. Okay, then my next question is on this letter that would send out the approval letter. Given that the applicants that are designated for approval are fourth and fifth graders and it's not likely that we're going to have a secondary space solution in place in the next two years. should the letter instead of saying that there's a likelihood the classroom space will not be available, it should be a high likelihood, could we insert that word, "high"?
I think we could, based on the data.
We don't want to say to these four fifth-grade applicants, you know, you can apply, but here's your decision whether to follow through. Because they may not follow through if that language is in there and they understand that they've got to reapply next year.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to make it as strong as possible to make sure that they understand that.
Question, Mr. President?
Just the administration take their advisement.
A question for Nancy. Can you speak about the trends, particularly for those going out? There's fifty-six, you'd said, and two-thirds of those are secondary education?
Yes.
Can you speak to the last two years, year or two?
You know, I don't have the trend on that.
Okay.
I do not. We could go back and evaluate that. I've not reported that before, but we would have the ability to go back and look at that and send that out to you.
I think it'd just be interesting to see. The open enrollment's been a hot topic. We've talked a lot about it, even through the campaign, it came up very regularly.
Yeah.
And again, it's really a product of the capacity issues that we have. So just to understand that trend and make sure that we're looking out for the parents and the students that we have in our community today and make sure we're providing, you know, the type of environment that we want to continue to attract the talent that we always have here.
The application form itself doesn't ask, does not ask parents who are applying to go out or in, why?
Is that a possibility to add?
To survey them voluntarily, we could do some kind of a study.
Nancy, can I add to that? When we do open enrollment, exceptions, which is a spinoff of this, they have to give us a reason why.
Yep, that's another part of the statute that happens continuously, yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just to Bruce's point, there are many of these, particularly virtual schools, that are really beefing up their recruitment efforts.
Yeah.
So I think that's reflected in our numbers somewhat.
It is. Fifty-six percent of those requesting out are requesting virtual school, over half, rather than another school district.
Yes.
Is that because we don't, we are not offering the classes virtually that these students are looking for? Is that?
Sandy can respond to that.
Why are they going out for the virtual school?
We currently offer courses that we don't have on our campus at the Hudson High School, but we don't have an array that could be full-time online release.
All right, thank you. I have a question for. We talked about this at a special board meeting last year. We talked about the appeals, and you think we would lose on an appeal because of what we decided in January? It's something we're appealed now, but how many appeals have we dealt with?
Over the years.
Say in the last ten years? Or the last five years, that's usually the four you'd count.
Probably about eight, maybe.
So eight appeals over the last five years, you're saying? Okay, and did we lose or win them, do you recall?
We won some, we lost some.
Okay, so we're really, by saying no to these open enrollment students, we're risking maybe eight appeals in the next five years, over the next five-year period, which we might win or lose about half of them.
I don't know. I could not verify that.
Just an example of why I said no to open enrollment every time it's come up since I've been on the board. And I'm going to say no to this too, because I would rather take the chance of having a couple of appeals and having us lose them than have to deal with a bunch of students who we're going to have to say no to when sixth grade gets here. Thank you.
The, just to go to the appeal question that Lynn had earlier, when an appeal is filed, we do incur the costs of our school attorney, and it's considerable data collection and verification on the part of the administration. It's a very time-consuming and costly endeavor.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the applications of student numbers six, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-four for open enrollment into the Hudson School District pursuant to board action taken on January eighth, 2013, which identified 2013-14 regular education enrollment space available in grades three, four, and five.
It's a motion by Lynn Robson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie Johnson. I'll entertain any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please, when you're ready.
Okay.
Could you repeat the numbers again that are being approved?
Six, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-four.
And just to be clear, these are the students where there is availability of space currently. We don't know about preceding, the following years, but currently there's availability of space. All right, so.
Could I ask for those again, please?
The numbers?
Yes, for in, okay, you got them on the chart there, okay.
Six, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure.
And by the form of the motion that I seconded, I assume that means that the other twenty-nine applications are not being acted on?
That'll be a separate action, we'll take.
Separate, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Roll call vote? Did you have a comment, Mary? Roll call vote, so Sandy, I'll start with you.
Gerke, no.
Hanson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Robson, aye.
Turner, aye, no.
Bell, no.
Johnson, aye.
So that is, it does pass four to three, I believe, so. All right, so as mentioned by Board Member Johnson, there's a separate action now to deny the remaining applicants. And if you're ready, I'll entertain that motion. There's language in it.
Mr. President, I move to deny the applications of student numbers one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five for open enrollment into the Hudson School District pursuant to board action taken on January eighth, 2013, which identified regular education space is not available at grades K one, two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and special education space is not available at any grade level, early childhood through grade twelve.
So the motion is before us, and we can repeat it.
No, we can't.
It is also in front of you, I think.
Thank you, I found that.
So there's a motion by Lynn Robson and a second by Dan Turner Hoy. Any other discussion? Care for a roll call vote for this?
Not necessary.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So now to the matter of action on students going out of the district, I'll entertain a motion to that effect. Either denying or approving.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applications of student numbers one through fifty-six for open enrollment out of the Hudson School District.
Motion by Lynn Robson, second by Sandy Gerke. Any discussion? Okay, a voice vote, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on then to the next action item. Early childhood program agreement with the St. Croix Valley YMCA. This is a team, Dan and Cory.
This is a team effort here. Okay, this has to do with an agreement for early childhood program education with the St. Croix Valley YMCA. We have had an agreement with the Y for a number of years, as I understand it. This is a little bit of a different twist in that in the past, we've been able to, you know, share space with the middle school and us getting space at the Y. That's no longer the case, at least for this proposal. So the proposed agreement for the 2013-2014 school year with the YMCA to partner with the school district to provide inclusion programming for our early childhood special education students. The key revisions to this agreement is the district will be prepaying for five classroom spots for three-year-olds and five more for four-year-olds. Should the district need more slots due to growth, agreement reflects, this can occur with mutual agreement between the parties. It's my understanding as well that this agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel. There would be some cost savings involved with this as it relates to the normal charges associated with it. Is that correct, Cory?
They're being very favorable with the rates they're providing for the district.
So, have anything else to add?
Yeah, I could just add a few things, thank you. Just by way of background, this is one of the three primary options we provide for students with disabilities ages three through five. We have a program here at Rivercrest, we have the YMCA Inclusion Program, and then we provide some itinerary services in the other private preschools in our community. So this is basically a requirement by law, and it's been a wonderful relationship with YMCA over the years, and they are being very generous with their rates they are asking for in relation to the change in this agreement. But it is an ongoing agreement. I think we've had this agreement in place in some fashion for about thirteen years.
And this agreement also came before the Finance Committee, and by consensus vote, we pretty much approved it.
You're recommending?
Recommending it.
Any questions for Dan or Cory regarding this agreement? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agreement as presented. So moved. Motion by Brian Bell. Is there a second? Second by Sandy Gerke. Any discussion? All in favor of the agreement as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on then to the agreement for special education services with Northwest Metro Intermediate School District 916. This is Dan and Cory.
Yep, thank you. This proposal came before the Finance Committee as well. We had the opportunity to review the proposal for special education services with Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916, which I believe is White Bear and St. Paul area to serve students requiring intensive special education services that are not currently available to them in the Hudson School District. The district currently has five students receiving services in 916, and potentially that number could grow by this fall, as I understand it. By joining Intermediate District 916 as an associate member district, the district can realize cost savings for providing these required services to students, for students that need them. And I personally think it's, you know, it's an innovative approach for the school district to be looking, you know, outward to these other entities that can provide these services and also to do it in very cost-effective ways. So again, the Finance Committee reviewed this and by consensus supported the approval of this proposal.
And I can just add that this is a service that provides support for a very low incidence number of students. We will not have large numbers that need this service. But for even five to ten students, this would be providing us a significant cost savings. We wouldn't have the critical mass to replicate the multiple program options they can provide to us. And we may be using five different programs with seven students as of next fall.
Any comment or question from the board regarding the special education services agreement with District 916? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement for the special education services with Northwest Metro Intermediate School District 916 as presented.
So moved.
Moved, a motion made by Sandy Gerke.
Second.
Second by Brian Bell. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving then to Procedure 5127.3, Physical Education Credit Option. Brian and Sandy.
Thanks, Mr. President. This procedure came in front of the Learning Program Development meeting on April 29th, and it was endorsed by the committee. The basic, the concept is something that's come up to this board before is for those students that are juniors or seniors, that if they're in an approved sanctioned sport or extracurricular activity, that counts as basically half of their PE, it counts as a PE credit or a half of PE credit. So that's what the net-net of it, there's some restrictions on it. They have to have, you know, a C-plus or better in ninth and tenth grade physical education. They have to basically take a core class in lieu of that phys ed credit, right? So the idea is you don't take phys ed, but you do something in their core class, right? Which would be math, social studies, science, or health. And so there's some details that are actually in the procedure, but I, you know, I think the Learning Program Development Committee thought it made a lot of sense. I think it makes a lot of sense. So it's something that I think we've, you know, previous boards have advocated for it. There was some concern from the phys ed department to make sure that, you know, it's more to phys ed than, you know, it's basically learn some life, you know, kind of life sports and goodwillness. And there was some concern that there needs to be that foundation. And, but, you know, we're feeling that we can get that in ninth and tenth grade, and this is a good compromise situation. And my two high school boys are very happy about it. I got good daddy points on this one.
Just to summarize again, so the students have 1.5 credits required currently. So that's three semester courses in PE. This would be in lieu of one of those requirements. So if they take an additional course above graduation requirements, are in a sport and they're successful, then it could be in lieu of that credit requirement. And there was a question that night too about, well, how do we say what's the approved varsity and so on? And it'll always be here. What you approve in here and that extracurricular, those will be our approved sports. So that's what we can always use as our list of approved.
Is extreme skiing in there?
No, it's not.
I'm sorry, you said about that.
Mr. President? I move to approve the Physical Education Credit Option as presented by Brian.
Motion by Lynn Robson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce Hanson. Any discussion?
I just have one more question before I vote. That list that you have there, that's just athletics, isn't it? That doesn't include any clubs?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good question, good, okay.
There is something like, there's like adaptive floor, and there's a few things that are, you know, maybe that are outside of a kind of attritional WIAA sport, right?
Dance line is recognized by WAA cheerleading and then our adaptive floor hockey.
I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any of the like clubs that are in your list there.
No.
Thank you.
I just have one question, Mr. President. It says the decision of the principal is final, and I was trying to find where in the policy that there's a decision to be made, but is it just alluding to the overall eligibility?
Correct, that they've met all the requirements, correct.
Okay, good question. Any other comment or questions before we vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the procedure for 5127.3, Physical Education Credit Option as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on then to the health insurance. Moving on then to the Health Insurance Partial Self-Funding with Health Partners and Dental Insurance Self-Funding with Delta Dental. Dan and Tim.
I'm not sure what these other committees are doing, but I'm on the hot seat today.
Admiring you.
Anyway, this has been reported on at past board meetings. I think it's sort of an exciting venture for the school district with the potential of some fairly significant cost savings associated with it. So, Tim, did we want to have our guests speak to it first, or how should we present this?
Well, it's up to you, Dan. You tell me how you want to do it, and we'll, we can have Brian talk, or you want to, if you want to finish with your...
Why don't we have Brian provide the details, and I'm happy to help fill in the blanks.
I'd speak in Chinese like they did earlier, but I have no clue what they were saying in that realm, so. I would be remiss, I was here in April, and I think I told you about my daughter who said hello, and on my way here, she said to make sure I say hello to everyone again. So, for my daughter, Lillie, she wants me to get home soon, so.
For those, I'm just going to, for those who don't know. This is Brian Owen, he's with Gallagher Benefit Services, and so many of you have had the opportunity to talk with Brian last month. Bob Hogstess from Summit Group Solutions is our other individual we've been working with on this, and unfortunately, Bob was not able to be here tonight, but Brian is going to walk you through the worksheet, and we've updated this worksheet since you've last saw it with specific, more specific numbers to what we're looking at tonight. And so, you know, let you take it away, Brian.
So, really what you're looking at on the worksheet is two different ways of funding health insurance. The current way the district is doing it right now is on a fully insured basis, where you're paying a single and a family premium to Health Partners. They're taking on all the risk associated with that. That's the only outlay of expenditures that the district's going to have in that realm. And what we're looking at is if you look to the context of it, the $8.345 million is the actual premium that would be paid to Health Partners. What we've done below is to incorporate or break out how Health Partners comes up with the $8.34 million. So, it's broken up into component parts of, if you look at, for example, part C, which is actual claims that are being paid by the district for the employees, the dependents that are under the plan. But along with that, Health Partners has to incorporate additional costs for miscellaneous expenses and premium taxes that are being accounted to and paid to the state to run some of their state assistance programs. What's not incorporated in here, which will be additional taxes coming on, is that little thing called healthcare reform, so additional ACA assessments that are being paid for the, in Minnesota, the state exchanges, but in Wisconsin, you'll be, individuals have access to the federal exchange in that realm. Health Partners then incorporates a fee to process claims, and also a fee to pay additional liability expenditures, insurance, in case there are issues or errors in emissions, that they have to pay insurance relative to that. The pooling charge, what you'll see is incorporates a fee associated with any large claims that will be taken away from your experience. So, if the district did have an individual, for example, that had a million dollars worth of claims, that could be a detriment or catastrophic event as it relates to the insurance premiums that could be paying in the future. So, that pooling charge allows the district to, again, only allow $100,000 towards the actual experience of the group. The remaining would be paid in a pool reserve of the insurance company that Health Partners so chooses. Miscellaneous reserve fees, there's a state requirement that as part of that premium, dollars are paid into a state reserve in case an insurance company becomes insolvent. Any additional claims that are outside that haven't been processed or paid yet need to be paid from that reserve fund. And then lastly, a broker fee association to pay the consultants that the district is working with, which incorporates the $8.34 million. That's again on the fully insured basis. What the district is proposing is to look at what's called partial self-insuring, where you buy a risk, excuse me, an insurance company that helps you avoid those catastrophic claims. You're paying an administrative fee to Health Partners, but beyond that, the district would be responsible for any claims for any one member, individual, under $100,000. So, you can see on top of the $737,000, which is $100,000 specific deductible, so any individual on the plan, an employee, spouse, or dependent, the district would be responsible for the first $100,000 of claims in a plan year, which would be July through June. Any dollar claim above and beyond that would be paid by the insurance company. So, going back to that million-dollar claimant, $900,000 would be paid by that insurance company. Part of the $736,000 is listed below, of the $678 is actual premium paid. As part of being a fully insured plan, which is the stop-loss is there's that risk, the 2% that needs to be paid, along with some premium tax assessments. So, if you add the $44,000, the $15,000, and the $678 incorporates the $737. You're then again paying Health Partners two, actually, it's one fee wrapped into it. If you look at TPA costs, which is the actual processing of your claims, the $309,000, there's additional costs where they're buying E&amp;O insurance or fiduciary insurance that's wrapped into that administrative fee. But the bulk of the cost on a self-insured platform is actually the claims that are being incurred again by the district and their employees. So, adding up all their fees and taking account of where the claims experience has been for the group and extrapolating that forward, you can see that we believe there would be potential savings for the district by not even changing plan design, but changing the fundamental process of how you're paying for health insurance.
That's Dan.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
But, you know, I really think it's a good option for the school district to consider doing. There certainly seems to be a trend for a lot of school districts, especially larger school districts, to be moving in this direction and accruing those savings. For example, the city of Hudson is, I believe, partially self-funding. The St. Croix County, Dunn County, a number of school districts in the Twin Cities, and I know there are several school districts in Wisconsin, although Tim didn't have those up at the end of his fingertips when I asked him for the meeting. So, I guess unless there's any other questions for me, Tim, or Brian.
Any comments, Tim?
Yes. And I want to talk, you know, in relation to both the health insurance and the dental, because we're looking at tonight self-funding for dental insurance. So, and along the lines of the same premise, it's a little cleaner, a little easier on the dental side, because we're, we have a limited upside to the top benefit that's paid out. But if you look at, look together at self-funding for both the health and the partial, or for both the health and the dental, we're looking at savings of over $670,000. And again, tonight, what you're looking at is from the three proposals, we're looking at Health Partners. The fees for the self-funding are higher than the other two proposals. However, when we look at our top provider of hospital services, which is the Hudson Hospital, they are, they're able to provide deeper discounts, because they are owned by Health Partners, and so there is some potential for additional savings, not potential, but there is additional savings. And again, those, that Hudson Hospital is a top provider. And so, those are things that will help to offset that higher cost. We also have some additional savings from some of the soft costs that occur each time we change providers. Brian can add some detail to that if you have a question on it. By remaining with Health Partners, we've got a, it provides additional continuity to our employees. We know, we know what we're getting. One of the other pieces of that, again, Health Partners being higher, is there are other programs, and I would have Brian, again, go into a little detail if you have questions on that, that we won't get with the other two proposals. And so, Health Partners has no increase in their fees, their administrative fees, for two years. And then if I switch over and talk about Delta Dental in this as well, their proposal is a no increase for three years. So, we have a two-years, no increase on the health, three-years, no increase on the dental, and that's for the administration portion of the fees, the claims, et cetera, the things that Brian went through. What we're proposing in the way of rate increase, and again, this is different, this is a different concept than what we have under the fully insured. So, we're talking about what's called equivalency rates rather than premium rates. So, but we would propose an equivalency rate on the fully, on the partially self-funded health insurance, that would be a 7% increase, and then a 2% increase for the dental insurance. Even with that factored in, if you look at health insurance and you factor in this equivalency rate of a 7% increase, our rates are still 8% lower than our fully insured premium rates were in 2006, 2007. So, we're still 8% lower than we were in 2006, 2007 with that 7% factored in. And then finally, both personnel and the Finance Committee recommended by consensus that we move forward with those self-funding plans with Health Partners and Delta Dental as presented. And of course, the full board did see this presentation last month as well.
If I can make a comment, too, and to Dan's point, we have a number of districts that we work with that are, have moved from the fully insured platform to self-insured, a number of others that will be moving to that platform in the next couple of years. They've seen significant savings over that time, especially in light of the dental, where a majority of time, there would be nominal to zero to maybe a 2% or 3% increase per year. That seems to be, quote-unquote, the more of the no-brainer, because as Tom talked about with the limited cap for individuals to go in with a maximum of $1,000 per year.
Mr. President, I know one of the questions has always been not having necessarily accurate claims data. With being, with something partially self-funded, will we have better control over our data so we'll know more about our claims and be better the next time we go around as far as bidding this out?
We're going to have, yeah, with going self-funded, and that's going back, that's been a, been a plan, it's been a long-term plan of what we've looked at moving towards, and we will have true paid claims data with the self-funding. We'll have a little bit of different reports. We've had, and again, this decision's been based on claims data from Health Partners. It's just with the fully insured plan, there are some additional costs that are in there. We don't have a true paid claims, but it did allow us, and we had the information. Brian did analysis for us as well to move to this decision, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of these gentlemen? I'll entertain a motion regarding this, this plan, Health Insurance Partial Self-Funding and Health Partners, with Health Partners, and Dental Insurance Self-Funding with Delta Dental.
Mr. President, so moved.
Motion by Sandy Gurkey.
Second.
Second by Lynn Robson. Any other further discussion?
Just one comment. Since, since we've bid out insurance and now with this adjustment, how much less money are we spending on insurance? Two and a half million?
Well, we dropped down, you know, one and a half to two million the first year that we went out. Last year, we had a cap on the second year, and that was 6%.
But our employees and our teachers, I mean, the level of service, I mean, it's, it's strong, right?
We've had a very, very strong level of service. I would say we, and it's something we monitor a little bit as well, and I have not heard any complaints about Health Partners.
I'm stating the obvious here, but, you know, retaining and attracting great talent is really important to us, but it's really nice to be able to go out and do things like this, reduce our costs, and take that savings and use it in other ways in our district. So, that was my only discussion point.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Health Insurance Partial Self-Funding with Health Partners and Dental Insurance Self-Funding with Delta Dental as presented this evening. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. This next one kind of goes hand-in-hand with this, I believe. So, this is an effort, commitment to general fund balance for the purpose of partial self-funding of health insurance and self-funding of dental insurance. So, this is, Dan, I got to call on you one more time.
I'll keep going here. Well, naturally, this is the second tier of this project, is to create a fund balance for this self-insurance self-funding. The insurance consultant recommended that we have a reserve based on a 25% of estimated claims be established under the self-funding model for the purpose of paying claims for health and dental. The reserve helps to absorb the impact in periods when claims exceed the estimated amount, and the reserves at sufficient levels can be used to reduce the budget impact of equivalency rate increases in subsequent years. Self-insured entities set reserve level targets at between 20 and 40% of estimated claims. So, what we're proposing is that we pull from our own reserves an equivalent amount of 25% of what we anticipate are the expected claims amount. And, Tim, what was, what is that amount going to be?
That'll be $1,650,000. So, again, we're looking at, you know, if you look at the page in front of you, the estimated unassigned general fund balance would be estimated June 30th to be 15, a little over 15 million. So, taking in as a board action, a commitment of general fund balance for partial self-funding of the $1,650, and so that your net estimated unassigned general fund balance after that is 13 million, 13.4 million. If you look at the board policy, which is a 25 to 30% unassigned range, you're really kind of in the middle there, so you're within that 25 to 30% per policy.
So, you know, it's, it's always been a concern of mine to have, you know, an adequate school district fund balance to deal with our, you know, ongoing needs as well as maintain, you know, good cash flow from month to month without having to do any short-term borrowing. But this, even with this removal committed to the self-funding insurance, we'd still be within our policy guidelines, as Tim pointed out, so I think we can make it work.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have one question. This, taking that money out of the fund balance, just so I have this clear, is not going to affect the money that we have earmarked for secondary space that we did last year at the budget?
No. Yeah, that would remain.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Okay, any other questions?
Mr. President, I had a question. The recommendation is to make it 25% of the estimated claims. If we went to 30%, that would still keep us in the 12, 5 to 15 million range?
Yeah, yes, it would.
But if the recommendation was to be between 20 and 40, why wouldn't we go to 30 then?
Well, we're looking at, when we looked at the claims, where we are with claims right now, and looking at the equivalency rate of the 7%, and then adding in the reserve, we had some discussion back and forth about exactly where the, where the sweet spot really was. Again, we don't, the intent isn't to build up more than we need. Well, we, we could go that amount, but I think we're, with the 25 and then the 7% increase on top, we're right within the range of where we need to be.
Yeah, this is a new... Yeah, and most districts we work with have a goal to shoot for the 25% roughly is three months of claims, which would be more than adequate to build that reserve and keep it at that level.
That's what I was saying, is that this is new, and so we could try it at the 25%, and if we found it was lagging, we could increase it later.
Yes, yep, you'd adjust next year if you find that it's lagging behind.
One other comment, too, in your first year being self-funded, you do get some cash flow for the first month, because any claims that were incurred, June 30th is the responsibility of the fully insured amount with Health Partners, anything after July 1st. So, you typically get that one and a half months of cash flow that comes through, which can help in moving that forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding this item? Okay. Entertain a motion to accept the commitment of the general fund balance for the purpose of partial self-funding of health insurance and self-funding of dental insurance. So moved. So moved. Motion by Brian Bell.
Second.
Second by Sandy Gurkey. Any other discussion? All right. Voice vote, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, Dan, you can take a breather.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. The next item is consideration of adjusting the pay for the 2013, 14 extracurricular, athletic and non-athletic staff. I'll just walk through this. This has been vetted by both the finance committee and the personnel committee. And I'll start with the finance committee. On April twenty-ninth, the finance committee reviewed the preliminary cost impact of a comparability study of extracurricular, athletic and non-athletic pay. We have a number of staff, coaches, coaches and others, debate coaches, so forth, that are in extracurricular activities. They're receiving a certain pay amount, and we have done some studies which the finance committee has reviewed as well as the personnel committee regarding how we compare in pay for these particular staff. Should be noted that the last time that there's been any adjustment to these staff, these extracurricular staff, to their pay was in 2001. So, that's twelve years, and I think it's time that they have a review. So, the administration has provided to the finance committee two options for consideration through that comparability study. The, one option was to take the median pay of the twenty-three schools that were used in the earlier teacher salary study. And a second option was to take the cost of a number-two ranking in the Big Rivers Athletic Conference. I'll explain that. That means that Hudson is the second-largest district in the Big Rivers Conference behind Eau Claire. So, the options that were presented were to look at a pay scale that matched the median rate of those twenty-three schools that were used in the study, or look at a pay amount that was equal to the second ranking in terms of the size of our district. So, we wanted to be above the third rank, but below the first rank, within the Big Rivers Conference, in Hudson, Wisconsin, United States of America. And, sorry, it's getting late, I'm getting punchy.
Yeah.
So, we looked at this, and the finance committee by consensus selected the number-two Big Rivers ranking with longevity pay, which was the less costly of the two options. The personnel committee, which I was part of, on May seventh, and by a majority vote, approved the administration's proposal for extracurricular, athletic and non-athletic pay for a number-two Big Rivers ranking with longevity pay. It should be noted that, and it's interesting, you should understand that several new clubs at the high school functioning for more than three years with sustained student membership and a volunteer non-paid advisor were added to this list. I just wanted to point out that the process for extracurricular activities comes about based on first, starting out as a non-paid and a trial type of activity. And once it demonstrates that it has a sustainability of membership, it looks like it's got long-term sustainability, then it can move into a paid position. And as I noted, several new clubs have been added to this list. So, we're asking the board tonight to act, to approve a revision to the employee handbook to align our extracurricular athletics and non-athletic pay with a number-two Big Rivers ranking with longevity pay. And Nancy, if you have any other information you want to provide?
Yes, and that action would be effective next school year. It's not retroactive pay for this school year. Just to kind of summarize, if we look first at the extracurricular, non-athletic, there are fifty-five clubs and activities for which there is an advisor, a paid advisor. And of the fifty-five, the study would recommend that twenty-eight of the fifty-five, about half of the fifty-five, had less than a second ranking in the Big Rivers. And the cost of bringing those twenty-eight of the fifty-five up to that standard would be twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy. The athletic extracurricular has not done quite as well as our, as our non-athletic. And in fact, I can't find the right sheet here, seventy-four of the seventy-eight coaching positions were below the second-ranking standard. And some of them were dead last, sixth out of six, or five out of six. And you can, the two committees saw those rankings in a larger study. And that cost would be forty-three thousand, nine sixteen. When you add the clubs, and there's actually four of them, the personnel committees entertained three of them, and there was a fourth that came forward from the high school after the meeting. So, there's four clubs, so that's additional pay figured into this. And we also made some adjustments to those positions where the increase was nominal, like two dollars or something to bring it. And given, you know, that nominalness of it, we looked at twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, we settled on twenty-five, so that there's this twenty-five-dollar differential between the third and the second place. So, that brought the cost up a little bit as well. But in total, the cost of the two together is still around eight thousand dollars less than it would have been if the finance committee had chosen the twenty-three school median.
Tim, did you have anything to add to that, or did Nancy take your thunder?
Oh, I think Nancy covered it well, yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Question, Sandy?
I had some questions about this at the personnel meeting, and they were answered, and Nancy answered and informed me regarding how many students you have to have for a club, and how do they get started, and who monitors it, and so on. But I see that the three new clubs that you're, we're now going to be paying people for, if you check the 2012, 13 student handbook, there's no description for two clubs. One is that GSA club, and there's another social justice club. These are listed in the student handbook. All the other clubs have got qualifications, when it begins, when it ends, all of that, really descriptive about what the club is about, and when it starts and ends, and what the requirements are. But two of them whom we are now going to be paying for have nothing in the description. So, will that, maybe you can tell me why? This is what I'm talking about. This is from the 2012, 13 handbook, and there's nothing under this one, and there's nothing under the social justice club. The social justice club, I don't see on the list at all. Would that be the diversity club, maybe? That's the new one?
No, that's different.
So, the social justice club is different than the diversity club that's listed?
Yes.
It's different from the sustainability club that's listed?
That's correct.
All right, will the diversity club and the sustainability club then ultimately end up on the list in the handbook?
Yes.
Okay, with full descriptions, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, there's two in the handbook that have nothing.
Are they just that new?
I can, I can.
They've been updated?
Yes, yes.
Well, you, one of them, one of them you told me at the personnel meeting is over three years old.
Well, I can tell you more about all of them if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay, and this comes from Laura Love. The student-to-student club, which was added after the personnel club, it was just an oversight, an inadvertent oversight in bringing it forward to us. But that particular activity started nine years ago.
And which one are you talking about?
Student-to-student. Started nine years ago and has been running consistently ever since. The program serves fifty to one hundred students every year, with about a third of them being students with disabilities, and two-thirds being students in regular education programs, And the earlier clubs that we talked about during the meeting, one is the diversity club, and that started fourteen to fifteen years ago, so a long time after three years. And it started originally as the Black History Club, and it averages about thirty regular members, and has had several volunteer advisors. The GSA started over ten years ago and averages ten to fifteen members and regularly requested by students. And the sustainability club started four years ago, and the membership fluctuates up to twenty members generally.
Okay, and where did you say the student-to-student club is on here?
It's on the board packet.
Oh, it's on that?
It's in the board, yeah, it's in the board packet.
All right, I'm sorry, this is what I was.
Yeah, the, the, the high school handbook is not in the board packet.
Oh, no, I'm not looking at the high school handbook, I'm looking at what I was given at the personnel meeting. I don't see student-to-student on here.
Okay, I'll show you. If you look at page six, in the, in this part of the agenda, page six, at the top you see yearbook. And then move down to number twenty-nine. Student-to-student, STS it's called.
Oh, STS, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, my iPad here is, it's taking forever to go anyplace.
Okay.
Okay, I've got it.
Okay.
Okay, so then will there be in the handbook then, will there now be explanations of what these other two that?
I would expect that, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Sandy, just clarification, you're talking about the student handbook?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Brian?
Just a comment is, this came up in the finance committee, and, you know, I've seen football coach, you know, wrestling coach that my kids are in, and, you know, we couldn't pay enough for the amount of work that, that these individuals are putting into, you know, outside the classroom, that's really important to our kids. And it's, if you're not personally attached to it, it's an incredible amount of work. And, you know, I really, I really respect the work that all these, all these organizations do, and I think this is the right thing to do, and really supportive of this. You know, it's a, it's a small move, it's the right move, but it's the right thing to do for, for the amount, the amount of work that these individuals put in to the kids in the Hudson School District, so.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I also want to thank Stephanie for bringing forward to the board at the meeting the manual and the incredible amount of work that you've put into establishing just sort of that structure and the guidelines, criteria, high standards, and I really appreciate that. Thanks for bringing that.
Okay, with all that love going on, does anybody like to make a motion to this effect?
Mr. President, move to approve the pay, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen extracurricular, athletic and non-athletic pay as presented.
Okay, motion by Brian Bell, and second by Dan Turner.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, any discussion? Do that?
Could you just repeat again the number of years it's been since we last had any increases?
Since 2001, so that would be twelve years, twelve years, so.
And I caught the twenty-four thousand that there, twenty-three thousand that the non-athletic pay total was. What was, I didn't see a total on our packet for the athletic pay increase.
No. What was it? Forty-three, nine sixteen for the athletic. Again, seventy-four of the seventy-eight were considerably behind.
Okay, so, but both combined, the impact is less than?
Is, is less than using, yep, is less than using the, the other study.
Spread over many individuals. Spread over many individuals.
Oh, yes.
All right, roll call vote. Start down here with Jamie, are you ready?
Johnson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Gurkey, no.
Okay, motion passes. We will now move on to the next item, which is the appointment of our delegate to the CISA eleven convention on June third, 2013. Happy to announce and with gratitude that Jamie Johnson has agreed to be our delegate. Thank you, Jamie, I appreciate that. This is an actionable item, so I think we have to vote on it outside.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sandy Gurkey, second by Lynn Robson. Any discussion? Okay, a voice vote, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jamie, again. Come back with all sorts of nuggets for us.
I'll do that.
Get some advice from Sandy, who went last year.
I will, I'll be talking to her.
It's fun.
Yeah, it's fun. All right. I've never been there.
Was it in Turtle Lake last year as well? Okay.
You can't beat fun at Turtle Lake, all right? All right, here we go. So, the next item in our, second to last item, is the Willow River Kitchen Remodel Contract with Connolly and Sons, Willow River Kitchen Remodel Construction Contract has been taken under consideration. I'm gonna take this one along with Tim. Facilities Committee has reviewed this. This is, this is good news for us. The kitchen, the current food service operation layout is in two different areas. There's a food storage and dishwashing area that is separated from the food preparation and large pot washing area, which creates inefficiencies. Probably does something for people's exercise, but creates some inefficiencies. And the project, this project is designed then to combine the two areas into one more, more efficient area. There are some items, equipments, including, there's an older cooler, refrigerator and dishwasher that were originally scheduled for replacement due to repair frequency and low energy efficiency. And there's an older inefficient oven and hood systems that will be replaced with energy-efficient models. So, it's not only construction of walls, but it's also equipment. Connolly and Sons Construction was the lowest proposal of the three, and the two others were Gavit Construction and Derrick Building Solutions were the other two. The Connolly contract is for a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars plus the cost of a payment and performance bond, which we haven't gotten yet, maybe we do now, but it's, but we, Tim will probably update us on that, so I think it's a fairly small amount. The food service equipment will be purchased separately by the district for about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And what's great about this also, besides the efficiencies and the wear and tear on people's feet, is the project's not funded with tax levy dollars, but rather user fees generated from the food service department itself. The facilities and grounds committees reviewed it, reviewed. The Facilities and Grounds Committees reviewed it, and, reviewed the contract and recommends Board Approval. So, Tim, what do you have to fill in, anything?
I think you've, you've done a pretty complete job, Tom. Other than on the payment and performance bond, that is something we're still waiting to hear. The contractor is working on that, talked to him yesterday and he anticipates getting that. It's not out of the ordinary for him to get these things, so just waiting on that as the final. He's ready to get started and it definitely will be a good project saving. Certainly getting some energy savings, again, equipment that was scheduled to be replaced will be, will be creating a better space, a more efficient space, so.
So, you know, we had this discussion at the Facilities Committee, the approximate cost of that performance bond, what did we think that was? I have a number, but I can't, I'm a little scared, scared to tell them.
Well, what, yeah, we, what we've done in the contract is we've got one oh one seven and then plus the payment performance bond at the contractor's cost, but not to exceed three thousand four hundred dollars. After a little more discussion with the contractor, we, that's the, that's the amount. Again, he was reestimating a little bit different than the amount we talked about before, but again, that's, that should be sufficient.
So that's in the language of the contract, not to exceed three thousand four hundred dollars?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions about this? Jamie?
I assume the constru, the construction agreement will be retyped so that it says Willow River Elementary School instead of Willow Ridge.
Oh, you know what, yeah, well, thank you, yes.
Good catch.
We'll, we'll fix that, yeah.
Gold star.
Yeah.
Very good catch.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve this contract.
Okay, motion by Jamie Johnson, second by Sandy Gerke. Any other discussion? All in favor of this recommendation, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, we are to the consent agenda items, we take these as one action item. I entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the specific language around the expenditures. If somebody could do that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent items including expenditures in the amount of two million one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, motion by Dan Turner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn Robson. Any discussion? No, no discussion in this. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Mm-hmm. Mr. President, could I comment on a retirement that you've just approved?
Do you want to rescind that retirement?
No. You, you just approved in your consent items the retirement of Shar Krueger and Shar has spent twenty-three years at E.P. Rock in Nutritional Services. And she is currently the Site Manager, otherwise known as the Head Cook. And her supervisor, Peg Eller, says that she shows true dedication to her job, staff and students. She is always supportive of encouraging kids to eat healthier and try new ideas. Thank you.
Another retirement that you failed to mention was one of Nancy Sweet as well.
Yeah, but you approved that a long time ago.
Much to her begrudging, but you did. So, we want to thank you, Nancy, for your services. Would you like to make a speech or anything? Okay, I think so. Okay, we'll move on then to our committee reports, starting with Learning and Program Development Committee with Brian.
Thanks. Met on April twenty-ninth, covered a few things that we haven't yet discussed tonight. We revised the student medication policy. Basically, those policies were just to, if you're on a field trip, sometimes it's, it's hard to have people who are trained to give out medication. This is all tightly controlled with, with parental consent of, of the parent of the student who's on the field trip, that they're agreeing that someone else can administer medication. As you can imagine with the quality of our, with our medical staff, you know, tight language, but also just kept in line with current laws and made a lot of sense, so. Anything else you want to add to that, Corey? Thank you. So, it was good, it was well, well done. The second one was B Y, B Y O D, Bring Your Own Device Implementation Active Learning Labs. This is really more of an update. By the way, I'm personally a huge advocate of this, I really think we have to eliminate the textbook. And I think we should do the next, the next, I like to do the next few years. Textbooks are completely archaic. No one uses them, they're not used in corporate world, they are a thing of the past. It's like, no kidding, bringing a piece of, a tablet and a chalk with you. We have to stop. So, and the great news is a lot of our students already have a access to the web. Eighty-seven percent of our students have access to the web right now, right? And, and a large, large majority have one of these things or have an, or have a tablet. So, the costs are not as bad as you may, you may think. I think we have to really push ourselves in this one. I think we have to eliminate the textbook. So, that's China, I came in with China as my rally cry, I'm, I'm going to go out with the end of the textbook.
Death of the textbook.
May I make a comment?
So that's, my two comments on that.
May I make a comment?
Yep, please.
I agree, hundred percent. That should be our goal, get rid of them.
Yeah, just eliminate them. It's archaic, no one learns that way anymore. All right, that's my statement, personal statement as well as the committee bullet point. Then also student use of electronic communication devices. We're starting to allow curriculum teachers to, to use electronic devices like phones and, and computers in the middle school now, so we had to change our policy. It was only allowed in the high school now, allows in the middle school based on, you know, tight constraints, on when it can be used, when it can't. It, it has to be part of the curriculum, the teacher has to allow it, but we're opening up the middle school to that. We still, we still don't allow them in our elementary school, which is probably appropriate right now, so. I don't want to give my third grader an iPhone, even though she keeps asking. And then lastly, Fiscal Education Credit Option, we already covered that, so. Any, any other comments?
Questions, Brian? Thank you, Brian, for the edited report. All right, then we'll move on then to Finance Committee with Dan.
Okay, we covered most of the items this evening. The Early Childhood Program Agreement with Sanctuary Valley YMCA. The Agreement for the Special Ed Services with the Northeast Metro Intermediate School District, nine, seven, sixteen. The athletic, athletic and extracurricular pay, health insurance, partial self-funding. The only thing that we didn't cover this evening was the Quarterly Financial Report through three thirty-one to twelve thirteen. And for the most part, we're pretty much on track with, with our budget, revenue and expenditures. The only notes that I have were, there were some expenditures, water and sewage, that some of the numbers were skewed because some of those expenses were allocated in the previous fiscal year. And, let's see, unemployment compensation expenses were considerably lower this year. Otherwise, I think everything else seems to be in pretty good shape, but certainly would entertain questions and I'm sure Tim would help.
Any questions of Dan, of the Finance Committee?
Thank you.
Dan, thank you. All right, I'll take the last two, which is the Facilities and Grounds, of a Facilities and Grounds Committee Meeting, which was held on May seventh. And we have covered a number of the items already tonight, including the Willow River Kitchen Remodel Construction, the Secondary Space for Learning Report, and the other item, well, those are the two items that we covered tonight in that, that agenda. So the ones that I will report on is the Land Use Agreement. This relates to the Grand View Field for the Varsity Baseball Field and the upgrade that we're working with in collaboration with, is it the Hudson, is it the Booster?
Dugout Club?
The what club?
The, the dugout club?
The dugout club, that's it. So, and what they're looking at and wanting to do is an upgrade with an addition of a press box in storage and concession structure that would be right behind the backstop. It requires moving the backstop back, cement pad, and this would be completely funded by the dugout club.
Yes.
Okay? And so a portion of the building pad is on the city, on city property. And therefore, we have a proposed agreement with the city granting specific use to our district, Hudson School District, for a portion of that property. And city requires a variance application for this to happen. And this variance request will need to go to the Board of Appeals, tentatively scheduled for June eleventh, with the city approval anticipated by or before June seventeenth. This board will take action on this on June eleventh, so our next meeting. Recommendation for approval is scheduled for that date, so. The next item that we had on our agenda was the Fund eighty Facility Staffing Requests and Facility User Fees. There is a growing demand from our community for use of our facilities. And it's not only from our community, but it's also internally as well. As you've heard, some accolades for our athletic program, they're becoming more active and requiring more facilities as well in our, in our district. So, our plan is to, based on the feedback that we've gotten and some assessments, our plan is to open the high school, the middle school and Willow River Elementary fully on weekends, including Sundays as needed. This plan will require, as a result of that, that we add staffing to cover the extra hours and add certain staff for security and safety reasons, which we haven't had necessarily in the past. And the plan also requires us to raise our rates to cover those additional costs. New facility areas will now be, now be charged where they weren't charged before, such as the Commons Area, Wrestling Room, the Media Center, for example, haven't been charged in the past, will be charged now. Comparisons of rental user rates were reviewed and found that we were generally still below the average rates, even when we change, charge enough to cover anticipated costs. And the projections that we've got for those rates, we believe conservatively cover our costs, so. And they're still low by comparison. School extracurricular activities continues to be a large internal user of our facilities. The Hudson Basketball Association and Hudson Swim Area Association are also large external users of our district. So, that was, that was the plan that we put forward as a, as a Facilities Committee. The last item was a revision of Policy thirteen forty that reflects change in the priorities of facility use on Sundays from school activities to community activities. And I'll try to explain that. In our, our rule is that school gets first priority on facilities, on reservations. On Sundays, we want to turn that around and make our first priorities our community on Sundays. And we believe that that will accommodate our community in a better way and not take away from what we need from the school, from the school activities. And it also adds language that changes to more correctly reflect quali, qualified groups. So we've changed the policy, Policy thirteen forty, to reflect those two items, basically. Language that changes, that more correctly identifies qualified groups and the, the switching of priorities from, to, to the community on Sundays versus the schools. Any questions regarding this?
Mr. President?
Yes, Dan?
I, I appreciate that report and I look forward to taking a look at those new policies. I guess my position would be that, you know, all of our buildings are community buildings and I certainly don't want to put up barriers for people, whether it's internal or external use for the appropriate use of those facilities. And that I personally would like to see our objective to make sure that all we're trying to do is just cover our costs and nothing more, because again, you know, these are our community buildings. I think we need to, you know, make them, invite them, inviting for our community to use and not send any messages that, you know, could be interpreted that we're trying to close out the use of these facilities for, for those folks.
I, I would personally concur with that and I would assume of the others.
Mr. President?
Sorry?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was at the Facilities Committee when, when we talked about this and that was a question I had too. I brought it up that I thought we needed to meet our costs, but not make it a profit sharing thing or profit earning thing. And the way they, this was constructed is very much like that. There will be no profit, it's simply going to cover our costs and that seems fair. So I think that's been very well covered with the way the report has been done and the, all the thought that's gone into what they, what can be done for the situation. We're just going to cover our costs and that's what our intent is really, just to cover the costs.
And I think in light of that, we'll probably review these, you know, regularly, annually to, you know, make sure that we're charging enough and maybe not charging too much, I suppose, so.
Right, the, looking at fees, we want to make sure that we continue to recover costs and try to break even. And then I just wanted to add too, is that you'll, you'll get, you'll get the policy revision will come to you in June along with the, the full plan, so you'll get a chance to look at that.
Okay, there are no other questions regarding the Facilities Committee. I'll move on then to the Personnel Committee, which also met on May seventh. And we've covered many of the items on the, the agenda, with the exception of two. One is a staffing update that Nancy Sweet provided for us. Just a kind of a, as we move into this time of the year, we're looking at putting positions in place for the upcoming year. There have been by report sixteen additional part-time and full-time positions that were previously approved for upcoming school year, two thousand thirteen and fourteen. Of those sixteen positions, eleven have now been filled. Four interviews are scheduled for the remaining positions. And a part-time high school health teaching position has been removed due to summer school registrations and so that's been removed from the sixteen. Twenty-one other part-time and full-time positions are opened as a result of retirements. Transfers and educational leaves, over half of these positions have now been filled. So, that's a, by way of report in terms of staffing. The other item that wasn't covered tonight in our regular agenda is May second, school closure for inclement, inclement weather and makeup. Believe it or not, we closed school on May fifth. We've had to close school four days and had two late starts this past winter. We've added two days, if you remember, the Board's taken action to add two days to the school calendar, which has helped meet the DPI's requirements for instructional time. And only the high school students in this case will now need to be, need to make up six hours of time. One late start and the collaboration time have been canceled to make up the instructional minutes. And so they're replacing development time with instructional time to help make up that time. All certified staff have two non-student contact days to make up. One of those two days is being covered by teachers working in collaborative teams on projects of their choice, such as assessing student writing together, designing common assessments, integrated units, et cetera. The final seven and a half hours will need to be accounted for by teachers before the start of the next school year by documenting work time spent outside the regular school day. by documenting work time spent outside the regular school day. So they have that kind of flexibility. The Teacher Advisory Council is supportive of this plan, and of course, the Personnel Committee as well. So, the other items we've already covered, I'll take any questions that you've got. Okay, hearing none, then we will, I'll entertain a motion to go into, to adjourn to closed session. If somebody could make that motion and read the statement as given at the bottom of our agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, considering compensation and performance evaluation data of specific public employees, and E, negotiating the purchase of public properties.
Motion by Lynn Robson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie Johnson. We'll do a roll call vote, so we'll start, Sandy, would you start?
Gerke, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Holland, aye?
Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Johnson, aye.
We're adjourned to closed session, and we will not be coming back in open session. Thank you.